Okay, calling the meeting to order. Sorry, we're running a little behind here. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wierig.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. All right, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving to the agenda. Do we have any?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, agenda is approved, or is there any objection to the approval? Moved, seconded, okay. Hello, Jeff.
Evening, Jeff.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no objection, the agenda stands approved, and we will, we have a presentation by Angelo Spandrio. Is Angelo, oh, there he is. Are we ready? Come on down.
We're happy to see you, Angelo.
You brought rain, good, that's a, it's a good start.
It's cold enough for a long day.
Not much, but it's a start.
We never state that the.
Here's my briefing for tonight. I hope maybe I can tell you something you don't already know about the state water project in Ventura County. Here's a little history, and I had discussions with the Department of Water Resources, I've had discussions with the Ventura County Watershed Protection District, with Cuyegus Municipal Water District, with Casitas Municipal Water District, and with United Conservation Water District. So hopefully I've covered the bases and getting good data for you for this presentation tonight. This all started back in 1963 when the Department of Water Resources went into a contract with the Ventura County Flood Control District for 20,000 of acre-feet from state water to come to Ventura County. In 1970, the Flood Control District went to the Ventura River Municipal Water District and moved the contract to them, and about that same time made them the administrator for the contract. This was in 1970, then following in 1971, the Casitas Municipal Water District contracted to Ventura for 10,000 acre-feet per year and contracted to United for 5,000 acre-feet a year. In 1996, United contracted with the Port Huinimi Water Agency for 1,850 acre-feet per year out of the United, out of the United allocation. So here's a diagram of the state water project. You're all acquainted with the California Aqueduct that comes down from the delta. We have two branches, we have an east branch and a west branch, and let's look at the west branch. West branch comes into Pyramid Lake just north of Castake Junction. Pyramid Lake is about the size of Lake Casitas, it's at an elevation of 2,500 feet. And if we look at the left branch, Piru Creek, comes out of Pyramid Lake into Lake Piru. And I want you to pay a special attention to the Arroyo Toad, that's my wife's depiction, she found the Arroyo Toad. So we're going to talk about him a little bit later. Then out of Pyramid Lake, we have a two-way conduit, if you will, that goes to Castake Lake. Castake Lake is a little further south, it's about one and a half times the size of Lake Casitas. It's at an elevation of 1,500 feet, and you see that dual-direction arrow. When electricity is low-priced, they pump water from Castake Lake back up to Pyramid Lake. At higher prices for electricity, they let it run down from Pyramid Lake to Castake Lake to generate funds. This is all, all of this belongs, down to Castake Lake is all Department of Water Resources facilities. And you notice Castake Creek that runs then into Santa Clara River, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Out of Castake Lake, then we get into the Metropolitan Water District facilities, and we have the Foothill Feeder that goes into the Jensen Filtration Plant, that's a MET facility. And then out of that plant, of course, goes to Los Angeles, and then Cuyegus gets their water from the Jensen Filtration Plant. And Cuyegus then supplies, a couple of different directions, but also into the Springville Reservoir in Camarillo. Out of that to the City of Oxnard, then on to Port Huinimi. I couldn't get to the bottom of the financial arrangement that makes the allocation to Port Huinimi happen. It's a complicated arrangement that I could not get to the bottom of, but just somehow it all gets paid for. And then, of course, the new dotted line there is the program that's going on right now with the Ventura intertie to state water. And then the question mark a little further up the hill below Lake Casitas is what are we going to do about, about that connection? I wanted to show you this, you may not know this, but if you look at the Santa Clara River, and it's not labeled, but you can probably figure out where that is. The United Water Conservation District has control of the Piru Groundwater Basin, the Fillmore Groundwater Basin, and the Santa Paula Groundwater Basin. All big groundwater basins sitting on the Santa Clara River. And of course, right then next to the ocean is the mound basin that Ventura uses. So there's a lot of groundwater basin territory there that can be added to if you can run water down the Santa Clara River. The funny thing is that United, from the very, very beginning, has had more or less a connection to state water by, can I get this to go backwards? Maybe if I knew what I was doing. Yeah, so United has always had a connection to state water via Piru Creek and via Castake Creek. The problem with that connection is that a lot of water is lost due to evaporation. If they pull water out of Castake Lake, some of it gets into Los Angeles Groundwater Basin and then evaporation, and then you have percolation down the Santa Clara River to get back into the, into the groundwater basins. So what about total costs for the state water project? Total cost of Ventura County through 2015 amount to almost $74 million. The Casitas portion of that is about $18.5 million through 2015. And just for giggles, off to the right, I put what the MET has contributed to the state water project, and through 2015, they've contributed almost $12 billion to the state water project, and have drawn about 37 million acre-feet of water from the state water project.
And I'm going to interrupt you real quick, are you going to, about to tell us how much water we, Casitas ratepayer has got for that 18 million?
Yeah, in fact, we got nothing, United.
The answer is zero.
Yes, United got, United got some.
Yeah, but Casitas got zero.
Right. And so did Ventura. So if we look at anticipated charges, and DWR has a schedule of payments set up for 2016 through 2035, there's an additional $82 million on the books for that period of time, and 20 million of that will be a Casitas charge. So if you look at the total charges for the duration of the contract through 2035, the total charges by Ventura County, they will have paid $156 million to the state water project, and Casitas would have contributed about $40 million. I also just read that Casitas is in negotiation now with DWR for a contract that'll extend another 50 years to 2085.
Angelo, can I?
Big your pardon?
Just, I just, I want to clarify one thing. So when you say Casitas is paid, the ratepayers for Casitas have paid?
Property owners within the Casitas Municipal Water District have paid that tab.
And have not received a drop of state water.
Right, and nothing comes out of the Casitas budget. It's all money that they collect from property tax money that then is forwarded to DWR. If you look at the accounts payable logs from Casitas, you can see random payments throughout the month to DWR from property tax that's collected from their dis, well, actually, their payments are from all of the districts.
They collect it.
They collect it all and then send it on to DWR.
And for the audience, DWR, Department of Water Resources.
Department of Water Resources, yeah, state agency. Now here, here's, here's where the water went. In those 25 years, from 1990 to 2015, United bought water from the state in 18 of those 25 years. I have no idea why they didn't buy water before 1990. But anyway, during those 25 years, 18 of those 25 years, they bought water. The cost of that Table A water ranged from $70 an acre-foot to $228 an acre-foot. So quite a bargain, I think, for the price of water. Also during that time, portions of Ventura and Casitas allocations were purchased by United to increase the amount of water that they could pull. And they paid Ventura and Casitas a minor surcharge to use their allocations. In 2018, United is buying 2,863 acre-feet from Casitas, their portion, their allocation for 2018, and in addition to a 3,800 acre-feet that they've also requested from DWR. United wanted to buy Ventura's 2018 allocation of state water, but last, at the last council meeting last week, the Ventura City Council voted to sell that allotment, their allotment for 2018, to the San Gorgonio Water Agency. And it looks like that sale price is going to be between a million and a million and a half dollars for their 2,000 acre-feet of water. Now, they have a 10,000-foot acre, acre allocation, right now, the state is allowing 20 percent of that, so it's 2,000 acre-feet that they're going to be selling to San Gorgonio. Also, in 2017, United purged the 10,000 acre-feet of Article 21 water for $152 an acre-foot, so that was also a bargain. Now, if I can go back.
And that's because there was so much water falling in the watershed, basically?
Yeah, what, what, what really triggers that is the storage in San Luis Reservoir off of the California Aqueduct. When that's nearing capacity, then the state says, okay, state, to all the 29 water agencies, we're going to allow you to buy water at this bargain price of $152 an acre-foot. So last year, United took advantage of that.
Right, so if you, if you have a way to store it, you can get cheap water.
You could buy a lot of water, yeah, yeah, if you had a way to store it. So in this case, because of the Arroyo Toad, United was not allowed to pull that water from Pyramid Lake, they had to pull it from Castake Lake. So their Article 21 water came out of Castake Lake into Castake Creek, down the Santa Clara River, to the various groundwater basins down the river to replenish them. So the Arroyo Toad really regulates what kind of water can be moved through Piru Creek from Pyramid Lake.
Only in California.
But it's not just the Arroyo Toad, it's connected to other environmental impacts. You can't just say the Arroyo Toad, per se.
There may be another frog, and there may be another tortoise in Piru Creek that regulates that flow, but I could find no other restrictions for moving, environmental restrictions for moving water down Piru Creek. The Arroyo Toad is, is the one commonly referred to.
The Arroyo Toad, maybe it eats insects, something feeds on, I mean.
It's an endanger, it's endangered.
Yeah.
Endangered species.
Okay, let's, let Angelo continue with his presentation.
No, only I don't want you to discount that.
It is endangered, yeah.
All right, what, where are we going now with the current, the current state water project allocation, as I mentioned, is at 20% as of January 29th, 2018, and as of the early part of March, the snow water equivalent is at 39% of normal. So we're not doing real well right now. People have asked about wheeling charges, what is the wheeling charge cost for state water, and these are 2018 wheeling charges. Metropolitan is charging $751 an acre-foot, Cuyegus is charging $22 an acre-foot, and the variable cost for state water is around $200 an acre-foot. So if we looked at total charges to bring water out of the state system into eastern Ventura, if you will, it'd run around $1,000 an acre-foot. State Water Project Future, I'd like to talk about these three things. State Water Interconnection Project with Ventura is moving right along. The alignment study has been completed by Kennedy Jinks. The notice of preparation of a draft EIR was out on February 28th. A scoping meeting for public comment for the draft EIR is going to be held this Thursday at the Ventura City Council Chambers. The draft EIR is anticipated to be out in the fall of 2018. The construction itself is estimated to take 30 months, and Ventura Water, just last week, is estimating operational by 2023 for that system, if it proceeds, if they can get funding, and so forth. Three Sisters Plan by the Ojai Valley WAG, that is out and around right now. I think it's the only viable project that's on the horizon for our salvation, and I strongly recommend that we support that program. A couple of key points of that program is, in 10 years, the lake volume is anticipated to be back to 150,000 acre-feet and, and not to go below that, so that's very encouraging. After three years, it's anticipated we won't have any more drought reductions imposed on, on the district because of the increase in water in the lake. The cost increase because of this plan is anticipated to be in this range, a dollar to a dollar fifty-four per 100 cubic feet. So if you, and that's what, per unit of water, so if you use 10 units of water a month, your water bill would go up by $15 a month. There is a Casitas-Cuyegus meeting scheduled for this Thursday, that will be the first time that any of these three parties have gotten together to discuss this plan, so that's an encouraging sign, and let's hope that, that we can keep this thing, thing moving forward. I want to mention the California Water Fix, because we need to pay attention to the California Water Fix, and why? Because we are going to be assessed a portion of that charge when that goes through. The portion that we get assessed, I'll get to that in a minute, the state water contractor's share is 55% of that California Water Fix cost. The Central Valley Project pays the other 45%. For example, if we had a $10 billion charge, and that's kind of what they were estimating for the single tunnel water fix, the last I heard, then the Ventura County charge would be a little over $26 million, their portion of that. Casitas is one-fourth of that charge, so the Casitas charge for the California Water Fix, if it turns out to be $10 billion, will be $6.5 million. And again, that would be an additional property tax assessment, so that we would pay our portion of that California Water Fix. And that's it, are any questions?
So that, the last thing you mentioned, will be a charge, be spread over all of us, whether or not we're getting any water or not, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so then the next, that goes back to the WAG or some other alternative, right?
That's right, right. This is going to be just like the charge we have been paying, it's just going to be a surcharge for an either better facility by putting a tunnel under the delta, and we'll all have to pay for that. If, there is, there is a clause, it's always possible to be, to become not one of the 29 water contractors again, but then we would be throwing away all that money that we have invested, and, and there have been agencies that have backed out of that arrangement years and years ago, and are now regretting that they're not part of the state water project systems.
Mayor Johnston, I just wanted one, one comment really quick. You've heard of the bullet train? Forty billion, to shave a few minutes off of a trip to San Francisco, 10 billion to make sure that we can still keep getting water to Southern California.
Excuse me, councilman, I, I just, I just saw the latest, two days ago, is that the projected cost of the bullet train is at 77 billion.
Even, there you go, okay? And then also, I'll add a punctuation to that, comparing, 70 billion, 10 billion, make sure we get water in Southern California, get to San Francisco a few minutes faster. Not a single current candidate for governor, major candidate for governor, is endorsing the Water Fix.
Well, if our drought problems can continue, I'm curious how subsidence is going to react with the rail line that they're putting in. Any other questions?
Other questions for Angelo? Thank you, Angelo, appreciate the information and the, the kind of comprehensive view of how, how we got here and what the choices are. Okay, Randy?
Looking for hope here.
Yeah, right, well, we got a little, okay, we are now to public communications, our comments, do we have some cards? Okay, good, looks like I'm not going to have to ration so much tonight, but we always appreciate you being concise and to your point, and saying ditto if somebody else has made your point. And I have Debbie Young as the first card up, with Jamie Bell next in line. Hello.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Debbie Young. I'm the owner and manager of Ojai Greens, the new dispensary, we're getting ready to open. And we just wanted to come here tonight to introduce ourselves, my family, my team, my nephew Jeffrey, my nephew Jamie, my niece-in-law Paula, and my nephew Matt. This is our family, this is our team, we're happy to be here, and we're very thankful that you've given us this opportunity. And I brought my nephew Jeff with me, because he wanted to speak a little bit.
Okay.
So again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council staff, good evening. Thank you, as Debbie said, we had heard that there was a possibility of a study group or a committee that would be discussing further cannabis operations in the, in the city, and we wanted to offer, offer up our expertise and our willingness to, to work with the city, to be part of a group if that is in fact happening, and just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the last thing I'd like to say is just, we're having our grand opening on Saturday, March the 24th. We'd like to invite everybody to come, even if you don't want to purchase or need to purchase, we'd certainly love to have you just come and see what we've done and what we're going to be doing.
For the record, why don't you say where that is?
We are at 410 Bryant Circle, Unit B, and they just repainted the sign, so people can find us.
And what time is the event?
The event's from 10 to 7.
10 to 7, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's Saturday the 24th, next Saturday. We've been.
Correct, there is a cannabis study group.
Okay, all right, who would we contact?
It's a subcommittee of.
Subcommittee.
Councilperson Francina and myself.
Okay, great, then.
And you can send an email to the city manager's office, and they can get messages to us, contact information.
And thank you, city manager, and to you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, and was that Jamie that joined you in the, oh, no, here, okay, said here you wanted to speak after Debbie, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to let her hear.
You're the second one after Debbie, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to say, throughout all of this, Chief Freihoff has been right there for us. Every, every time we needed a question, something helped out, you know, he's been right there. So I just wanted to come and give him, give him props for, for all he's done for, for our business.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Ron Solorsano, am I getting better at it, Ron?
That was.
That was as close as I've made it. It's taken me a while to not want to go.
That was the best, the best that I can generally hope for, so that was, that was great, thank you.
You can call me Johnson then, and I'll get even.
Well, thank you all, members of Council, my name is Ron Solorsano, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. There are a few quick things I wanted to mention this evening, starting with some of the events that we have coming up this week at the Ojai Library. On Thursday, March 15th, Opera Santa Barbara is going to be returning to the Ojai Library to deliver a free noontime concert. We're always delighted to host these folks as they perform beautiful renditions of popular opera standards and classics accompanied by piano. It's a lovely event, and I'd hope to see as many of you as there could be there. Then on Saturday, March 17th, the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom is going to be hosting their monthly film screening, and that's going to take place at 2:00 PM in the library's meeting room. Now, next month, April, is National Poetry Month, and during the whole month of April, the Ventura County Library is going to be holding its annual haiku poetry contest. Customers are going to be able to submit their, their haikus either online or in person at any of our library locations, and we're going to judge, judge the submissions and have some modest prizes available for the winners, so looking forward to that as well. The last, the last major thing I want to mention is a little bit, a little bit bigger, a little more exciting. This is a collaborative project that we, the library, are working on, along with the Ojai Valley Museum, the Museum of Ventura County, and CAPS Media down in Ventura. All of our organizations are working together in order to create a historical archive of the most devastating natural disaster in county history, the Thomas Fire. To this end, professional recording sessions are going to be held in Ojai, Santa Paula, and Ventura, to allow the public, as well as firefighters, law enforcement personnel, and other first responders to share their stories and recollections of December 4th and the following weeks. The recorded interviews are going to be archived, with the eventual goal of having the entire archive be accessible to the public to share the remarkable stories of heroism, sacrifice, tragedy, and healing surrounding the Thomas Fire. The next recording session is scheduled for Sunday, March 25th, it's going to be from noon to 4:00 PM at the Ojai Library. So please drop by if you would like to participate, or if you know of anyone who may have a story that they would like to share, please do, share this information with them. That's all that I have for now, so if you have any questions about any of this or any other library programming, just please do let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bliss Page and Michael Haley on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and citizens and law enforcement. My name is Bliss Page, and this is my husband, Bill Page, who I didn't think was going to stand up. I'm, I'm a metastatic breast cancer survivor who believes I am alive today because I use cannabis oil in treating my cancer, and as a result, I have a vision and internal drive to make this medicine available to many of the patients who can benefit from this amazing plant. My family and I have secured what we feel is the ideal manufacturing facility on Bryant Circle in Ojai to make pure medicine to help local residents as well as patients statewide. We are requesting the City of Ojai approve an ordinance for us to obtain state and local licensing to manufacture cannabis oils and tinctures. Our new business would provide local Ojai brands for the three local dispensaries to sell. We would have no walk-in business, but instead, our products would be moved by licensed distributors. Unlike dispensaries who need walk-in traffic or local deliveries to sell products, our clients would be statewide. We feel this will potentially provide more income to the city as well as hiring local employees. Approval of our plan to process medicine in Ojai is, is in accordance with the local voter's support of Prop 64, the adult use of cannabis. Many illnesses have been helped by cannabis products, but for many illnesses condition, many serious conditions, the medicine must be extracted from the plant rather than smoked. We will fill that niche, processing the plants grown by licensed cultivators elsewhere in the state and making it into the final medicine. We resemble the pharmaceutical industry in what we do, but we do it all naturally. Our goal is to make the purest medicine we can in a safe and clean environment to help relieve human and animal suffering. My 11-year-old dog was just diagnosed with glaucoma. Even the average person has probably heard how well cannabis helps with glaucoma. We are currently starting her on a version of the same medicine. Unless you have experienced a life-threatening illness, it's easy to reject things that are new or that we don't fully understand. Once diagnosed, though, with a real illness, it looks a lot different. Chemo doesn't always work, and some illnesses like childhood seizures are best helped by natural cannibal, cannabis instead of pharmaceuticals. New ideas are hard to embrace, especially surrounded by our past reefer madness insanity. It's hard to let go of ideas put out by the alcohol and pharmaceutical industry to destroy the cannabis market. Thousands of deaths have been attributed to legal alcohol use and zero to cannabis ingestion. This medicinal plant has been suppressed for many reasons over the thousands of years that it's been used. Let's be an example to other cities and embrace positive change and progress. I hope to address the city council as often as I can to educate, inform them, and the public of our plans to produce clean, organic medicines. Please consider my request, much appreciation.
Thank you, Bliss.
Mayor, if I could ask a question? Is there any regulatory agency or testing agency that oversees?
Oh, yes.
As you say, the production of this medicine?
All of it's regulated, every aspect of it, they thought it through, and it's all meant, it's all regulated by the state and local, the, the fire department, the police department.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm not talking about those kind of regulations. When you say that you're creating some sort of a cannabis oil.
Yes.
Who's to say that that is the strength, the purity, as maybe something Jeff is creating, which is cannabis oil, is there any?
There, thank you.
So it's, and who tests that? Is it like the FDA, there's an agency that tests it?
It's the, well, if I could jump in, the Bureau of Cannabis Control.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
The state has a Bureau of Cannabis Control now, we have that.
Okay.
And it, they regulate all of that.
The BCC.
The BCC.
Thank you very much.
I want to add one.
No, this is not a cannabis discussion, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I was just curious how many people you might employ.
I'm thinking we'll employ at least three. I know it's a small start, but we got, we have to get up and running, you know? Eventually I would see a dozen. That's my vision.
That's why I wanted to know.
Fifteen seconds, Mayor.
Thank you very... Michael Haley.
Okay, can I have 15 seconds?
Not on that topic. This is public comment, you know? We're not even, yeah, we're happy to have your comments, but not everybody up here's comments. Michael, go ahead.
It'll be on the agenda in the future again.
Thank you. Come every two weeks, that's fine.
No, I don't know if I'll take three minutes. I wanted to comment about something that I didn't get a chance to comment about for various reasons that was discussed earlier, which was the City Council's response to the Thomas Fire. Because I think there's been a lot of really harsh criticism of the City Council that was not fair. I lived through two, basically two similar crises up in Napa. The earthquake that happened in 2014 and also the fire. I lived through it vicariously on Facebook. I followed it as closely there as I did the one here. And you know, that's what happens everywhere. The first two or three days, when you have a major crisis like that, nobody knows what to do, you know? The first responders are busy, you know? They're not going to call the mayor when they're out there trying to figure out what they should be doing to fight what a huge emergency it is. And people in Napa did the exact same things. When we had the earthquake, that was in 2014, rocked our house, electricity went out. For two or three days, everybody's like, what's going on? What's going on? What's going on? Walking around trying to find, you know, what happened to our neighbors, that kind of thing. Again, the criticism of the county. And Napa County, they have money, right? They're not that much bigger than the Ojai Valley. They're like 32 miles long, seven miles across at the widest point, $9 billion of grapes they sell every year. They've got money. They've trained all their people. They have a lot more money than anybody in the states. If anybody would be prepared, it was them. And they were, they didn't have this, you know, the mayor out there, the county supervisors out there, because when an emergency happens, they're busy. The first responders are busy. That's what they're supposed to be doing. So I wanted to mention that because I don't think that the criticism has been fair that I have heard. During the Napa fire, same thing on Facebook, you know, where are the county supervisors? What are they doing? Finally, after a couple of days, they sort of pulled it together and they said, okay, we're going to have a community meeting. They set up a room and they booked a room for 50 people and 600 people showed up. So the whole thing started all over again, like, what are these people doing, you know? But they were busy, so I just wanted to make that point. But in my view, we had the worst fire in California history, not a single house burned in Ojai. Sometimes the proof's in the pudding, and that's what happened. We got the job done, and I think that our government and our first responders deserve a lot of credit for that. And I just have not heard anybody say that, so I wanted to make a point to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Jeff Kroll.
Hello, Counsel. I'm Jeff Kroll, Shangri-La Care Cooperative. Last time I spoke, I gave you all a little thing about my speech. And one of the things I forgot to tell you was the average age of our attendance of people coming in to visiting with us is in their 50s. Now it's gone up. It's 54.7 years of age. I would say that about 50% of the people that are coming into our door are expecting recreational access. When we explain to them that the city has yet to accept that and put the ordinance in place, their response is, why? Why is my vote not counted? I'm over 21, I'm in my 60s. I mean, that's the response I get. We are offering newer ways of getting their medical recommendation that could more streamline, but still, it's about $50, $40, and they feel that it's not, shouldn't be put in place, a burden on them. I want to stress, I have had social services bring to me patients lately that are people that are dealing with drug addiction with pain medication. Cannabis has been found to lessen the amount of dosing in their normal prescription medications. We had a lady show up at mine, she was an MD, she lost her license. It was because of over-prescribing medications. She's a resident here in Ventura County, and the social worker actually brought her to us on Wednesday. She was suicidal. That's how bad some of these medications take people, and especially with the psychotropic prescription medications that are dealing with psychological problems. And this lady, she then called today, her social worker wanted to come and pick up some medicine for her. Of course, she's not her assigned caregiver from her doctor. We had to turn her away so that she would go to her physician with the lady and get the assignment that she is the caregiver for that individual. I have a list of 13 people right now who want that kind of assistance and help. So that's where we're at. Can this be a safe and legal access, whether it be medical or recreational? We just don't know where the cannabis is coming from unless you're part of the new regulated market. So we need to stop the black market. We need to stop having products out there that are not tested and not controlled and not regulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, that was all the cards I have. Bill, you said you wanted 15 seconds to make an announcement or something?
Just to add to the statement about deaths from alcohol abuse. You didn't mention the deaths from prescription opiate abuse.
Oh, right, thank you.
Which is terrible and increasing still.
Okay.
Yes, and demonstrated to be mitigated by the availability of medical cannabis.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is the consent calendar. I have two items that I wanted to pull for a brief discussion. One is D and one is H. Are there any others that the council would like to pull off?
Which ones?
The Planning Commission minutes and the...
Approval of the rest of the consent calendar, all but D and H?
Is there a second? Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any objection? If not, so ordered.
I don't, which, I don't see an H on mine.
The one that says trolley advertising?
Trolley advertising.
No, you must be, no, that's H.
No, there was a revised agenda.
Oh.
Oh, I don't have a revision.
Okay, I may be, I may be working for a first edition here.
I'm working on the first edition, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a revision?
Yeah, the tab hasn't been revised, but the agenda has.
Can I have one here?
Two more.
So D and G.
No, sit, Silas, okay.
So D and G have been pulled.
Okay.
And what are the topics?
D and G. The topics, Planning Commission minutes and the trolley advertising. On the Planning Commission minutes, I wanted to ask the City Manager a question. It relates to, it relates to the approval for the Brew Pub down on Montgomery and Ojai Avenue, which is, you know...
You're in the planning section then, Mayor.
The Planning Commission.
1-20 is where that, where that discussion begins on that meeting.
Um, G?
D.
G now?
Okay, turn to the next page.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you don't actually even need to go to the page. My question is this. I had someone come to my office about a couple of months ago, and their concern was parking mitigation fees. And my understanding at that point from the individual who was semi-petitioning for a waiver, that there was something like $120,000, $125,000 in mitigation parking in-lu fees because of the increased demand on that particular business location. And I note in the minutes back in December that the commission approved the plans for the Brew Pub, which is fine, but I don't, it's, Commissioner Corbin questioned about the parking component of the project, and then I sort of lost, what did they, it says she asked for details on the parking in-lu fee such when the ordinance adopted, where was the in-lu fee and what was the fee used for? And it said it was be put into the parking fee, so my, pardon me, it says it would be put into the parking in-lu fee fund. Not easy to say. In-lu fee fund. And then my, I heard, whether it's rumor or fact, that the Planning Commission, in effect, waived that fee. Is that, am I getting good or bad information here?
The Planning Commission made a finding to grant a variance, which then took away the requirement to pay the parking in-lu fee. So they did not waive the fee, but based on staff's recommendation, the Planning Commission approved a variance, which then made that fee no longer required.
Yeah, well, I guess then my question is, is that the customary way in which fees are not collected is by, most everything that comes through the Planning Commission is appealable to the City Council?
Correct.
And while the project is great, it seems strange to me that $120-some thousand worth of in-lu fees for parking are not to be collected, or was that not decided?
That was decided based on the variance that the Planning Commission approved, that they would not be subject to the in-lu parking fees.
Okay, and that was the understanding of the Planning Commissioners, that that's what they were doing?
Well, as far as I know, that was their understanding. I would assume so if they approved the motion.
Well, yeah, I watched that on TV and I read the minutes, and I can't determine that. And I guess the reason I'm making a point of it is that parking is becoming a real issue there. And I know some of us have a different view as to the best way in which to discourage cars from coming to Ojai, but having them circle the block and then the people coming to us saying, you know, give us a loading zone, give us an additional parking lot, and where are we getting the money? At some point, if we say, okay, my goodness, we've just, you know, tripled the amount of traffic in this area and they need to park cars somewhere, who's going to pay for the parking? So do we have, is there a plan that goes with that, going along with Commissioner Corbin's questions as to how this works? Because it didn't come to here for a policy decision. I don't see it in the minutes, and I didn't hear it during the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. Maybe I got lost in all this, but...
When I faced with, I went, if I could speak.
Go ahead.
When I faced with similar issues years ago on actions of the Planning Commission, the remedy appeared to be that I had to appeal it as a councilperson. So either individual people on the council can appeal a decision of the Planning Commission, or a majority of council can appeal a decision of the Planning Commission. I'm not sure about the timeframes along, but I believe that's the procedure.
Yes, that is a possible option. The window is closed to do so in this case, as that is a 10-day window from approval was approved on December 20th. But yes, and to minor clarification there, a single council member can appeal an item and then must recuse from consideration of it.
Yes, of course.
Two, two members can ask that the council consider calling it for review, and then all the council can participate in considering it. That remedy does exist, although not in this case.
Okay, so my next question then is, is we do have an in-lu fee fund. How much is in it?
Oh, gosh, I checked this a few weeks ago. I think it was, I think it's somewhere over between about $150,000. It's not a huge amount.
Much bigger, much bigger amount than I expected to hear, but...
And if I could make another comment?
I'll double-check that and get that.
I've actually spoken to businesspeople in the area and say, you know, there is some land available for possible parking improvements. Do we, do the businesspeople think we're at a point of considering pay for parking in Ojai? And they overwhelmingly said to me, yes. Now, I don't know whether that's true or not, but I just thought I'd add that to the discussion.
Okay, my reason for just highlighting this is that it doesn't seem like we have a plan to accommodate as we continue to, when, at our last meeting, the, wasn't the Planning Commission, but Mr. Whitman presented a, what, a design or a conceptual plan to the council saying, what do you think? And I noted in there that he was waiving, again, something like 20 parking spaces and that they were to be made up by using the skateboard park area, the park and ride. And that's the same one that was mentioned as a relief for the Brew Pub. I don't know how many other people would like to take credit for that, but it just seems to me that, are we ever going to address the parking issue as it said we would in the general plan? Are we, commissions, you know, it shouldn't be addressed by us as the City Council taking general tax money and using that to buy real estate, I don't think, at least in my view. But I think that there's, we got a gap here that this didn't come to the council. We waived tonight, I think we got a waiver for $5,000 or something for Libby Bowl fees. Well, if we have to spend our time on that, I would think that we would be addressing the parking issues. So I would hope that we'd get some kind of a report back that says, what are we doing? What is the plan, or is there one? It may be that the council doesn't want to do anything, but...
Okay, understood.
I have one comment about, you know, we discussed this in our Libby Bowl meeting today, and that was, who does waive fees in the community? And I was pretty adamant that council is the only body that waives those fees. So I'm concerned that the Planning Commission has the authority to waive $125,000 in fees without it being subject to some type of discussion at council. So aside from that, maybe that's just how the rules and regulations work in the planning, and we haven't ever addressed that.
Technically, they didn't waive fees. I know it's somewhat semantics. They made the finding to waive, to, they made the finding to grant the variance, which then again took away the obligation to pay the fees, which I understand. So technically, they cannot, did not waive the fees. I understand it's semantics at the end of the day.
But the, you know, so here we are, we had a 10-day window. This is done last December, right? In the aftermath, I guess, of the fire, which, and we're only getting the minutes till now. The public didn't know, and I suspect that members of the Planning Commission didn't realize that that was what they were being asked to do. Now, maybe they did understand it, but it sounded to me like there was concern at that level, and when I watched it, I didn't get the feeling that that decision was made until you and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago. So anyway...
I just have one more comment.
Yeah, I know we can't go back on this, but we should, we should make a decision.
But that does come into this comment here. When I read this and I, when I started reading this and I, and I started looking at the names that were involved in the minutes, and I went, well, that person doesn't sit on the commission anymore. And then I went back and read the first page again, and it's December 20th. So that's a concern, the fact that we're getting, here we are in what, March? And we're getting minutes from December? So I know with the new improved CDD director that that's not going to happen anymore, but it is a concern.
Do you know that the minutes have to go to...
That we're getting minutes three months behind.
Mr. City Manager, your comment?
Do you know that the minutes do have to go, that they have to be prepared by staff, and then they have to go to the Planning Commission? The Planning Commission has to approve them, and then we have to get them on the City Council agenda. So there is, there is some time involved there to be able to get them through. We can't just, you know, bring them back, you know, within a month.
I think it's fairly clear that there's a gap here as to who's making that kind of a decision and the people who are making it, as far as I could tell. Why did I have the applicant coming, lobbying me in effect to getting a waiver on the thing? Because the staff had told them they had to pay it, and then the staff recommends he doesn't have to pay it, and the council gets no notice. I mean, just make a note of it. There's probably not much that can be done at this point, but we, at some point, you know, we're going to choke down there.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that Mayor Pro temp Wirick was the liaison that night. I respect his ability to bring it forward if he had felt that the, that something had been done improperly at the, at the Planning Commission level. So, and it wasn't brought to us by Councilman Wirick, it was at that meeting.
I thought they understood what they were doing.
And I attended the meeting, and I had to leave and go home and watch it on TV because I couldn't hear what was going on in the deliberations, because the family gathering that night brought all the children, and they were climbing over the chairs, and I thought, well, I got to pay attention to this. And then I never heard anybody actually say this, and the City Manager is now explaining why it wasn't said. But I suspect that if there had been a real discussion of that, there might have been a different outcome regarding that, if not to separate the two issues. Because who's going to, you know, 40 years ago, there was going to be a parking authority so that we would address this. It's never occurred, and everybody keeps taking credit for what parking we have, and I'm not really, I agree with one of my colleagues here, that I don't want to see us turn into a giant parking lot on Ojai Avenue, but it's possible to do it without, you know, if we're going to keep intensifying the commercial uses where people get here by car, then we ought to figure out what we're going to do with the cars. So, anyway, okay, I've said my piece.
I think we should put on the agenda that we need a parking study, both, both car parking and bicycle parking.
Yes.
Right.
Not just one or the other. You know, we need both.
Right, and on our agenda tonight, there is a status report of our general plan where they make reference and said we had a parking study in 2006. So I agree with you. So I agree with you. We do need to take a look at it, but, but how the staff with the 2006 parking study recommended that we ignore the intensified use and no money to help solve the problem is distressing.
And I would like, at this late hour, for the parking, late hour on planet Earth, I mean, for the parking study, no, seriously.
No, I'm sorry.
For the parking study to not only include public parking, but church parking, business parking, that sits unused, because the time has come to approach these people that say, no parking, you know, blah, 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 sits, you know, that perhaps we can lease parking. So this should include better signage, so that people don't drive around the block, you know, that are, it's a very, I'm thinking of a truly comprehensive parking study with possibly the end result that we don't need to pave over more of the earth if we really take a good look. Boku is one business that wants to, you know, allow more, you know, outside parking on their property, so I think the time has come for that.
And how about the fact, how many people even know we have a lower Libby parking lot just below the bike trail, and there's no improved pedestrian path to travel to get up into town?
Yeah, yeah, all of that.
Maybe all it takes is signage and education, but to continue to consider that the skateboard park can accommodate all the vehicles doesn't make sense to me.
And we can't avoid a traffic study with that, because it's no use having more parking if we end up with traffic that doesn't move.
Your agenda.
They might as well just leave their car on the street and get out.
Yeah. And some people do.
With all that, I'm going to move approval of the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
We still have one other item.
Yeah, well, that's, but he's just approving this.
I'm just approving D.
Oh, okay.
Move approve of minutes D.
Second.
Movement seconded, any further discussion? If not, so ordered. Okay, let's go to the trolley. My concern on this was, when I looked at it, is that to have it on the consent agenda...
G. Or it's underage.
This is, no, it's, is it H now?
It's G on the agenda.
H in the tab.
Right.
Yeah, what became of H, okay.
Something got moved off the consent calendar, right.
It's gone.
Yeah, I think, I think Gail is just messing with me.
He backs her, son of a gun, aren't they?
Okay, it's probably advertising. The advertising program, we're talking about going into this...
Grant waiting in the booth.
Yeah, right, okay. The reason for me highlighting the thing is it looks like this is sort of a semi-business plan, where it says that we don't know really how it's all going to work out, and I had, I guess, a couple of questions, you know, come on down, Greg. The, the cost in, what do you call it, fair box penalty, or whatever the...
Fairbox recovery ratio, right?
Twenty percent. If we do nothing, I thought that number was reported to us as about a forty thousand dollar increase, or loss of offsetting revenue when we first talked about that. And it seems like now we're saying, even with the advertising, we're still going to have a forty thousand dollar penalty.
I think we're closer to eighty thousand before we proposed the advertising program. The advertising program is anticipated to drop that significantly, because we're unsure of how much revenue we can get from the advertising.
Okay, so my question then is, if we do nothing, the number is eighty thousand, split in two with the county, that gets us to forty, is that...
Roughly.
Okay, good. Okay, then the second question was, the forty thousand we're talking about that remains, is that to be divided in two between the, roughly between the county and the city?
Yes.
And are they good with that?
They are waiting to see, but I think it's down to a small enough number that we can all make it work, I hope.
Okay, so if the number was the bigger number, what were, were they going to...
Well, they wanted to see us doing everything possible to make sure that that number was minimized as much as possible.
Okay, and they're satisfied this is a, it's a bit of a gamble, but...
Right. At this point, they're not accustomed to contributing general fund money to the transit.
Right, as most jurisdictions are, and that's what has me a bit concerned, because I ran the numbers the last time we went over this, and it looked to me that like it was about an eight dollar a ride on the trolley, when you figure the subsidy in. And so maybe Uber or something else would be cheaper if, you know, I'm, I'm just...
It's the reality of public transit, right? If you've got a urbanized system, you should be eighty percent sponsored by grant money, and if you're a rural area, it's ninety percent sponsored by grant money, yeah.
So basically, what we have on here is taking a shot at maybe cutting eighty thousand down to forty thousand, and we're going to put up eleven, which we expect to get back through the advertising, so maybe at worst, what is it, a break even?
I, I think we'll quickly go beyond break even on this, yeah. We don't anticipate spending that full eleven thousand dollars unless there's commitments for ad revenue. So at that point, we'll commit the money. We'll do some initial money just upfront for marketing collateral and that kind of thing, just a thousand or two.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Whatever happened to the other things we discussed, and I, I haven't ridden the trolley lately, a long time, actually. So do you have passes or book lists, or some way that the public could support the trolley if they wanted to?
Yeah, we'll swipe, you know.
Right, and that's being initiated, and VCTC is working through a program on that to create simpler passes, system-wide magnetic strip-type passes and so on.
People can buy a monthly swipeable card.
The monthly, it really, we're trying to match what Gold Coast is doing, so I don't know if they're really planning to go to monthly. I think Austin's in tune with that a bit more.
Yeah, I think a yearly.
A year, a year is fine, I mean, just something.
Yeah.
Gold Coast does use a monthly, and we would be...
Step up here.
Gold, Gold Coast uses a monthly pass system, and theirs is a swipe card.
Right.
What we've been waiting on is to get the fareboxes installed that are compatible with Gold Coast's system and the other systems around the county. They had another project for automatic vehicle locators that we had on the system, that the current service, the contract was expiring, and so they're installing new, a new version of that. We were, the money for the fareboxes is coming from the remainder after that project is completed. So once that project is completed, fareboxes are next, and so they were initially telling us spring of this year, we're probably looking at summer, you know, into fall.
The councilperson and Zina and I both feel like, you know, caregivers, parents would set those things up on an automatic pay, perpetually renew, you know, on and on renewing thing.
Right.
And you'd probably get a revenue enhancement just from that.
Right, another one that we were looking at, that Gold Coast has implemented, is token transit, which is an app that works on your phone.
Yes, the same principle, yeah.
Right, they got, they have initiated that, so you could, they now accept that on their buses, but they had been holding off, I guess, for a funding source before they started marketing it. We wanted to see how, how well that was being, I guess, how the implementation went, and how much it was actually being utilized before we committed to that, because there's an expense involved in...
Sure.
In using that service as well, so...
Spend money, make money.
That's right, yep.
Mr. Johnson, I have two more questions.
Yeah, is this relating to the advertising to the trolley?
Yes.
Yeah, sure, go.
Is this a sole source on the fast signs? In other words, it's not a standard? You have to use that vendor if you want to put signs on the, on the bus? I mean, I didn't see any, I saw fast signs in there, I wanted to make sure it wasn't a sole sourcing here, that we were forcing people. As opposed to meeting standards, you have to use this company. Is that the case?
The fast signs, yeah, the bracket system, they were very responsive and showed us excellent system install on the trolleys, so that...
That's the frames.
That, that's the framing, but as far as the...
Advertising itself, are you limited, you're just going to one company?
We're not limited, but we're leaving that up to the vendor that we're choosing here.
What if the vendor says that you can only use one?
Well, I, I think this point, we're leaving it up to them to work with the businesses.
Do we have to do that?
We don't have to.
Create a monopoly in effect?
We don't have to, but I think we're trying to make it not too difficult for the firm, so they've got to say, okay, you've got five other companies, here's all the people you can work with, let us know who you're going to work with, I'll contact that one, and this one, and that one. She wants to make it streamlined, so she can do this efficiently.
Which also gives them control.
Well, the presumption is she's, the person, the vendor is trying to make a profit, and that they will be...
Right, and there has to be a certain degree of standardization.
Oh, I agree with that.
Right.
Like a sign program, you have standards.
Right.
But usually have standards, doesn't mean you, you only have...
Well, if you take a look at billboard advertising, you don't rent the billboard and then go look for who's going to put the copy up, usually you get it from the, get it from the billboard advertiser.
And the other question, I, I'm just sharing my, you know, it doesn't get traction done, but the other issue is, do we have full, does the policy allow us to say, that's just aesthetically, not acceptable? The staff can say that?
We have a fair amount of discretion at that, and that's what that policy is we attach.
At the aesthetic level, not just the...
Right.
At the aesthetic level, we've got a fair amount of discretion?
We have a fair amount, yeah, we'll have to be careful with it, but, yeah, we, I mean, we've got discretion, that policy, to, to have a good amount of discretion on what type of graphics and so on that are used, if we find anything offensive or too loud or so on.
Reflected paint.
Yeah.
To be clear, though, it's not straight aesthetics, because it's, we're creating, sorry, we're creating a limited forum, it's under the First Amendment rule, so we can't regulate straight on aesthetics, but we can on reflective paint, on neon colors, materials like that.
That's what I'm talking about.
But it's not complete discretion, and that's detailed in the policy and attachment C.
All right, two questions.
Okay, Randy?
So I don't see any, Greg, I don't see any comparisons to other like signage on other trolleys in other communities. So I don't know if this is a good rate, a great rate, or a bad rate. I did see that initially, when we put this out for an RFP, that we didn't get any vendors, so that might tell me that it's not a profitable business. But again, I just don't know if the rates are comparable. I mean, I'm, I market my company through the Yellow Pages and through magazines and things of that nature, and I spend a lot of money on it. But, but that's being distributed to thousands of people, thousands of people, and this is, has a limited, you know, distribution to our community of, I used to think we were seventy-five hundred, but I read somewhere now that we're eighty-one hundred, so that's our market share. So I was just concerned about that.
We did have some discussion that just addressed that, about the rates and so on that we anticipated, but we did warn that in previous, some other communities, they had trouble getting that out there. So we, we are not committing to these expenses until we see revenue stream and commitment by advertisers to advertise on the system.
And then the other thing I looked at was, we're turning over our trolleys to, to this entity, and in the event that we decide to close it down, or they decide to close it down, are we going to receive our trolleys back in like condition, in the same condition that we've turned them over to? Because I didn't see that in writing either.
The trolleys will still operate in the same way they do now, it's just that this firm, who happens to be located right next to our Public Works Yard, will come over with the advertising and snap it in whenever there's a new advertiser, and that's, that's about all, pull the old one out, put the new one in.
I'm talking about the actual exterior of the trolley itself. We're going to be changing the structure of it by attaching some type of signage. How is that going to impact the painting that we have, or the existing conditions that we have on our trolleys? And when this program hopefully takes off, but if for some reason it fails, are we going to receive the trolleys back in like condition that we turned them over to them?
So we'll, we'll still...
I don't see that.
We'll still have full control of the trolleys, they'll still be in our yard, but when they put those frames on, part of the cost that was mentioned in the administrative report is we'll have to remove some of that pinstriping and where the labels are that say Ojai Trolley and so on, and have that, those decals reset up and away from the frames, so we'll pull that away.
We'll still have the frames.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that they, we're going to buy the frames, and we have to install them.
Correct.
And then the advertising will be sold and be mounted, and if it doesn't work out, that's a twenty-five hundred dollar, according to this, I think a twenty-five hundred dollar expense to put the frames on, and I presume we'd be looking at that amount if we go back the other, what?
More like seventy-five hundred for the frames to be installed. Our mechanic is looking at doing them himself, it would be significantly less.
But the reverse and the decals and all that, I think is what Randy's getting at. If we put it back...
Am I not clear?
If this doesn't work, what's the cost to reverse it?
Oh, uh...
Seventy-five hundred, or...
It's to remove the frames and fill some, drill the holes where the screws went in, and our mechanic would handle most of that, and the touch-up, paint, and moving the decals back was roughly two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
And before that happens, we could discuss what, what we could do with that.
Yeah.
Might be something else we can do with that, public service.
Right.
You know, we might not need to take it down. Well, I'll send you an email on promoting the trolley on, on Ojai Earth Day. You know, we should coordinate something.
And Randy, to answer your question on the rates, it's like any type of advertising like this, it, it goes to gross rating points, which is whatever your market share is times the number of repetitions, so it's, it, you know, it's...
Your Nielsen rating?
Yeah, you know, it, an advertiser's going to look at it as to, how many people are going to see that, and how often are they going to see it? And that's going to create a certain ratio, and if it fits into an advertising budget, they're going to pay it, if it doesn't, they're not.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then do I have a motion to approve the item?
Motion to approve, second.
Movement seconded, no objection, so ordered, thank you. Okay, we go to discussion item number two.
Mr. Mayor, do we approve the rest of the, before we were...
I think we did.
Okay.
Okay, so we are on tab two, unless that got changed. Did it, I'm okay, good. Tab two is the general plan annual report, directing staff to file general plan annual progress report with the Office of Planning and Research. Do we have any cards on this?
It's to the consent calendar.
I think we have any. They said we did it, I didn't know we did that.
We did. I made the motion.
I had thought that that was done.
Yeah, we did that.
We did.
I missed it, too.
I remember the motion I made, yeah.
We're just getting back at you.
Okay. Yeah, right.
It's karma.
Must not have gotten this down to the center of the table.
The tabs and the, and the alphabet.
Someone put that wall up.
Okay, item number two, I have one card.
Well, the clerk and I agree, I missed it as well, and the city attorney is going back and forth on whether he thought we did or we didn't.
I thought that we had, but you could always do it again, and, all right, just to be sure.
I thought we did, the first item that we had pulled, then we did the second item we pulled, I don't remember doing the whole consent.
We did the whole one, we did.
Would you like, would you like us to do it again, just to be sure?
Just to be sure, dot our i's, cross our t's.
Move approval of items.
Second.
A, B, C, E, F.
Second.
And that's the revised agenda.
Yes.
Okay, we're okay with that? We got a motion in a second? Is there any objection to that? If not, so ordered, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple of comments on this one, read through it, it's an evaluation of, of what's being done to further the goals of the general plan, which is good, I'm glad we're doing that. It seems to me what we also need to do is to look and see, look at the general plan and see, are we, are we fulfilling the general plan as it was laid out, whenever it was written, which I think was nineteen ninety-one? For instance, the land use element, one of the things that it says in the land use element is that there's supposed to be a balance between tourism and maintaining a small community, and I think that we're out of balance, in my personal opinion, that things have grown, that tourism has grown a lot, and I don't think that we're really following the general plan, you know, and just reading through it, and I'm just using that as an example, that that there's got to be some kind of an evaluation of the overall general plan. Are we following it in general? And I don't know how that evaluation would take place. Perhaps the whole thing needs to be rewritten, or you need to have a citizens committee to review it. I'm not sure how that would happen. But I do think that there, and it's not just that one thing, but I think there's things in the general plan that if we look at it, we realize that we're not following the general plan. And maybe we need to get back to that, maybe we need to figure out how we can get back to that. Another thing is that there's, there's a lot of ordinances, I think, that people just don't know that we have. You know, it, it strikes me like the dark skies ordinance. I know about it, I don't think any of my neighbors know about it. I, I turn my lights out anyway, I would have without the ordinance. But everybody that lives around me has lights, bright lights on all night, every night. And, you know, we've tried this citizen arrest, what, you know, neighbors complaining. That hasn't really worked too well. We need another way to deal with it.
When you say neighbors complaining, do you mean to the city?
Yes, code enforcement, a lot of it goes by neighbor complaint, right? And then, you know, I don't want to complain about my neighbors about dark skies. They're going to get paranoid, even if, you know, it's just been, that doesn't work really well, okay? That'd be our last resort to try to enforce the law. Here's my idea. Maybe the city, and, and the other thing is that I don't think that a lot of people are on the internet, at least as far as city business goes, ordinances and things like that. Here's my idea, what about a newsletter from the city? You know, we get newsletters from Casitas, we get newsletters from the electric company. I read those things. I, I don't, maybe, maybe the people that aren't on the internet would read something that came to them in the mail. And so, and, you know, again, that might be an expensive proposition. I don't know how much it would cost, maybe you don't do it that often, but maybe twice a year, you know, in a friendly way. I think if my neighbors knew they were supposed to turn their lights out at night, probably a lot of them would, it would help. So that's a suggestion.
Thank you, Michael.
Can I just make a clarification for the public? It doesn't mean that you have to turn your lights off. It only means that your light has to shine down.
Okay.
Yeah, that it doesn't impact our ability to see the stars and all of that.
Mayor Johnson?
A second, okay, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Bill?
To fir-, I have several comments, but to add to that one. That's one of the programs we actually contracted with the Green Coalition to do, was awareness on dark skies. And it's the kind of thing that we should ask for a report of how effective they are as the agent of the city in doing just what you're talking about. Maybe they should have a newsletter, but if they're not doing, if they're not performing that function that we're paying them for, then we either ask for better performance, or we find another way of spending that money. You know, so I think you're absolutely right.
I agree.
With your permission, Mayor, I have some other comments on the agenda item?
Oh, I know what you just said.
Can we, are we going to get a staff report first? Come on, we're pretty casual, but let's get a little structured here to it. You have some more remarks regarding this particular item?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we hold that, okay? You have a question for Bill or something?
No, no, I just want to say, I'll bring that to the board meeting. And, and there's going to be a booth on, on Ojai Earth Day. But I think you're absolutely correct, they need to follow through.
Okay, and Randy, did you have some?
I said, are we going to have staff give the report before we start questioning?
Yeah, if there's a need to, if you have anything, it's fairly self-explanatory unless we have questions, I guess. But Steve, does any want to add that wasn't in the report?
Not necessarily, I just wanted to note that the reason why this is on as a discussion item is we are required to take public comment. There are two years' worth of reports here, this gets us current. We are required to submit them manually to the state HCD. Be happy to answer any questions in the report, I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, so now we'll-
I just had one question regarding that, that's why I wanted to see what Steve had to say. I just need to understand what annual means.
Yes, well, we're the first to admit that for a number of years, this had-
That's correctly.
For a number of years, this had not been done. And I'm not giving us a pass here, but we are not alone. There are many, many cities who do not file these reports annually. We're happy to say that we are not going to be one of those cities. There was a, but there definitely was a gap in a number of years where it was not being done. I believe we brought the 2015 report to council about a year ago. And so now we are, we are, we are getting caught up now. And, and so we are now there, and we intend to stay caught up.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Okay, Bill?
Some questions. Starting attachment A, two dash six, on the introduction. Just to be ac-, this thing needs to be accurate. The Department of Finance for the State of California estimates Ojai's population as of January 1st, 2017, which is, they're the official source in the latest they've reported, is seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three. Where did eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six come from? Where's the citation for that? Because the, again, Department of Finance does the population estimates intra-census.
No, I agree, that the state DOF would be the, the most recent estimate. That's what we would use and we should use, so we can conform the report to that. I'll assume that your number is accurate.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I looked it up because-
Staff will double-check that, and we happen to make that correction, thank you.
And, and the other issue is, if you look up our, on our, if you look up documents on Ojai, it's four point three six miles, not four point five square miles. Again, just to be accurate.
Thank you.
But you are a stickler for detail.
Yes, I am. Few other little issues. I think that in the increased supply of second units, Program Three, missing from that are the actions the city's taken with respect to the non-conforming program and the capacity fees. That was before December of seventeen, that we stopped asking for the will serve. And that's in service to that Program Three, in terms of removing unnecessary impediments. I think that's an action we took.
Good point, we can add that in.
That should be there.
Because you're making good points, I have them all highlighted in my chart too. I wanted to ask the question on the, on this Program Three. The nine second units, the answer to that is, is that's a, a total of additional dwelling units? Or is that just new constructed units?
That's the non-conforming in 2016, in my understanding.
This is, this is non-conforming, but not-
Already built.
Correct, right.
Legalized.
Did we have any new ones during this two-year period?
Finally legalized nine units in 2016. If I misunderstand the question?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything in here about any new construction permits.
Is it in?
And, and that is a good point, because I think that the mayor's making, because we did put in a new ADU ordinance, and that would be whether we can report whether that's facilitated any construction of new.
Yeah, we, we did mention that on, right there in the last sentence of the objective. It says, city's new ADU ordinance will also facilitate the provision of additional accessory dwelling.
But have we had any?
Where are you reading from? Program Three?
Just, first paragraph of Program Three.
I see.
But nothing in report about how, whether we've done any new permits under that.
Oh, right, okay, we can check that.
Yeah, I was just curious, it doesn't distinguish between the two, and I didn't know if it needed to, but it-
Okay, new construction, okay, well, we'll check that, we can add that in if council's okay with making that change.
Okay, next, next page, Bill?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to try to hog too much time here, just make two more real quick comments. Under the safety element, one action we did take was to assign the building appeals board a, a, a series of tasks, including updating the fire maps. And we started that in the fall of seventeen, so that's definitely an action we took July through September of seventeen. It was we-
Bill, pardon me, can I, let, I'll, by way of process here, let's go through it page by-
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no, that's okay, no, your points are well taken. I just, are we done with the housing element? Does anybody have anything else they want to?
I had a couple of questions regarding the housing. I was just, actually, I was going to ask you to do it this way anyway, instead of-
I'm sorry, Mayor.
... skipping and jumping.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, your, your questions were great. I, you know, first of all, again, this is obviously my first time reviewing this. It just seems vaguely written. There's just, you know, and I don't know if that's what it's intended to be. That's just my thoughts when I read through it all, it was just like, there's, there are some areas that were very factual. And then there's a lot of areas that were ongoing, ongoing, with nothing to substantiate what's ongoing to me. So that's one of the questions that I had, is just, is that the standard of these? Is that they're not fact-based, that they're not detail-oriented?
Well, obviously, they need to be fact-based. I guess the question at the end of the day is, I am not sure how to put this delicately, but, you know, how much staff time do we want to dedicate to be able to get a report to HCD? Certainly, we want to make sure it's accurate, and certainly we want to make sure that HCD is okay with the report. But I guess the question would be, if we, if we're too exhaustive, what does that get us at the end of the day?
I agree with that, except, let's take this back to Mr. Haley's question regarding general plan, or are we following it? That seems to me that's what this report is to do, is to actually take a look at our general plan, take a look at the body of it, and actually identify areas that we are following the general plan, or that we're doing success, you know, having good success in, and areas of the general plan that we may not be. That's, that's, I sense is the importance of this, is so that, for instance, we don't sit here and look at a general plan from nineteen ninety-one or nineteen eighty-seven. If these were required every two years or every year, something would have put the red light to the council in those preceding years, and said, maybe you need to do a general plan revision, or maybe you need to do an update, or maybe you need to have a general plan discussion. But that's all I'm trying, so I think that this is very important in, in, in that manner. So most of my questions in this section are based on that, are who, what, when, why, and how. You know, when, when I'm, on two fifteen, it says here, compliance achieved through December 2016, continuation of existing program through Ventura County Housing Authority. Okay, yet there's nothing in here that tells me what we're doing in conjunction with the Ventura County Housing Authority. So I don't know if that information should have been provided, or maybe that's something that I should have done on my own. But if we're going to cite something and, and say that the compliance has been achieved, I would like to think that we would, that the community would like to know how we achieved it.
Okay, just for feedback.
I mean, if I'm, if, if everyone's agreement, but I have that in the VMU mixed use. VMU regulations were amended to provide less restrictive requirements for lock coverage. Again, that seems to me that that's a, a pretty good thing that we've done. But I don't see when we did it, I don't, you know, I don't see anything that factually states the who, what, when, why, and how on it. And again, facilitate affordable housing development. When did we start? Who have we met with? Because it says here, continue to work with both profit and nonprofit developers to facilitate affordable housing projects. Yet I don't, I haven't necessarily seen any of that brought to council regarding the discussion item. So again, I, I just don't know who we are in conversations with.
And again, this is through 2017 only.
Right. So Program Six, the same thing, facilitate affordable housing development. It seems like affordable housing is probably one of the biggest crises that we have in this community. And, and again, I just don't, I don't see anything other than a statement saying that we're continuing to do something, yet we don't know what the to-do is. So, and like I said, I have more comments, but I'll pass them.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
I, I think that we, that as a council, we have to decide, is this a report that we're simply submitting to the state, which is a requirement that we do, with as much information as they need? Or is it a document that we want staff to spend a considerable amount of time on detailing it for us, for our use? I think there's two separate things. What we're providing in this report to the state is adequate. It doesn't tell us exactly what's being done, but it's adequate, and the state doesn't need any more detail. I can tell you that, that even though where it talks about the affordable housing, where it simply says that we're continuing to work with, with development, private, and nonprofit developers, well, even though we may not have anybody right now, in the last year, we've looked at the North Montgomery property, where this, the, you know, North Montgomery property, the mayor and Bill Miley have looked at that. We're always entertaining and talking to people, self-help to bring in new projects. So, I mean, I guess you could put that down here, but that's not really, I mean, that's for us to know. And, and it seems like it's a lot of staff time to really prepare to do that. But I, I agree, I think if we, as like, as a council, say, we want this to be our operating, up-to-date, precise document as to what we're doing, then we need to be prepared to have staff spend the time to do it. If it's a requirement that we're simply doing to send us to the state, that's a different, that's a different objective.
So, so again, I just, I just wanted to read this statement, it's the, in the background. I won't read the whole paragraph, but it says, the code also requires that a public meeting be held before the city council, so that the public has an opportunity to comment on the progress report. Obviously, we don't have a lot of public comments on this. But again, I would just think that this is a very valuable piece of information that we would like to put together and to be utilized, not just by council, but also to be utilized by the community. So, having said that, maybe this is the first time the community's seen a report of this nature also, and they didn't quite know how to respond. But I'd like to see us in the future, maybe to talk about how we could address this in a, in a, in a manner that actually has some validity to what our general plan is. And our general plan is a living document, so I would think that this would substantiate or support what that living document means to this community. That's how I would look at it.
When I was reading this, I was reading it as though I was not so much the state, but just as a status report to the council. And I got a bit confused as you started out by saying, what exactly does annual mean? Well, this is two years' worth, and we haven't even been doing it for years. And apparently, nobody, I don't know that we've been cited for anything. So apparently, isn't that important to other people? Except if you don't do it, and a problem comes up, they will hit you over the head with it. So it's good that we're doing it. But if you go to page six seventeen, and I read the objective on Program Eight, it says, information will be made available through the city website, as opposed to saying we had done it. And I said, oh, that's because it was written as an objective perspective, I thought I understood. Then I go to the next one, and the objective says, city is currently has an inclusionary differential that does not allow any residential zone, blah, blah, blah. But the two words that I, I have one that is looking forward as an objective, that we will be doing something, and another objective that says we're currently doing something. So in, in terms of information for the council, as I go through this, I'm not sure what we've done, what we're doing, or why we haven't already done it. In some cases, it seems like it may just have been the way the thing was written. I, I don't think that the state's going to get a hell of a lot out of this, but we will get our ticket punched, I guess.
Mayor Johnson?
Bill?
Yeah, and I, I don't think we should be detailed, comprehensive, but I do think this, this becomes part of our institutional memory. That's why I'm going to suggest some things that ought to be in here that we've done. We ought to at least get credit for what we've done, you know? And, and so I'm just going to-
What we're promising to do, to be sure we really are intending to-
Well, I'm, I'm talking about things we've actually done, you know, that we ought to get credit for. So I'm going to tick them off real quick. Under capacity preservation, Program Ten, are enforcing our residential zoning and passing an ordinance having to do with outlawing the advertising for short-term rentals is part of capacity preservation. We did it, we ought to get credit for it.
Yeah, well, if they know we're too close in how well we're doing it.
Well, but what I'm trying to say is, you know, under the air quality element, we have taken two actions in, in furtherance of this program, the Bentley appeal and the contract with Sea Frog.
Okay, let's stay with the, the section, but then we'll, we'll get to, because I agree with you.
Okay, that's, okay, I'm done with housing element, I was going to go to the other element.
So the housing element, uh-
You know.
We have a little bit of a conflict in the report we're giving the state, not that they'll notice it, but this whole issue of preserving open space and referring to some properties as surplus.
Which program?
Well, if we, when it talks about, city could use its surplus property as under Program Twelve.
Right, that's, that's in our housing element.
Right, and say, we go, so, but we don't define exactly what surplus property is. And then we just sent a letter off to Fannie Mae saying we were keenly interested in using certain parcels of land that some of them are considered to be surplus and consider it to be open space and parks.
Well, for study and analysis, yes.
Yeah, right.
But my point, Mayor, is, is there were nothing when that letter of support went beyond what our housing element already states.
I'm just talking about the conflict between referring to the same properties, one saying that we are protecting open space, and another declaring it surplus. And we just spent two hundred thousand dollars to buy a sliver of land that doesn't have any real functional, other than trying to get an easement across it up there on Signal and Grand. And there was other ways to do it, but I'm willing to buy off. We spent two hundred thousand because we're preserving open space. But I don't think at the same time, we should be saying we're preserving open space and referring to properties as surplus.
But Mayor, the, the point is, is that the housing element is the only component of our general plan that is reviewed for compliance by a state agency. None of the others are.
Well.
And, and so that is in the housing element. Now, if we, we should, I, I agree, let's, you know, think about changing it.
Exactly.
But it's in the housing element now that is a matter of fact, until we change the housing element, which is certified for compliance right now through 2021. It's the only element that's up to date in our entire general plan.
And apparently needs to be revised, so it's not quite up to date.
I'm just saying.
Okay, no, I, I'll, I'll accept that, that point. I, it keeps getting back to, we're filing a status report on our general plan that we all know, one, even the status reports aren't on time, and two, we have, in, in this report, as we go through, I read two or three different times where it speaks of, the city is in the process of determining a budget for a complete update of the land use element and the general plan as a whole. That's, I think that's mentioned in your three different times. Have we ever discussed that?
We should put it on future agenda item as soon as possible. I have that on my agenda for tonight, actually.
We've never, we've not, you know, maybe that satisfies-
I have a proposal for starting that on a future agenda item tonight.
I thought we should do a workshop on this, where'd I get that idea?
Yeah, my, so, you know, are, are we misleading the state, or do they give a darn? I don't know, but it just seems like we're saying two different things. And some of it is, it sounds more like excuses, I'm sorry to say. Okay, circulation, no, we got to, we have, we, we go to land elements. Does anybody else have a comment other than that one I just made? Okay, and then we go to circulation element, and comments on the circulation element.
No, it looks complete to me.
Well, it's the one that says, the downtown Ojai parking study was done in 2006. And here we sit, where we waived a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of fees, and we don't even have a study going. So that's out of date too.
Yes, it is.
But that also goes back to what I'm saying about these reports. If we're not doing these reports on an annual basis like we're supposed to, and the last study was, was performed in 2006.
Right.
We're, what, eleven years behind the times?
Yeah, okay, and that's, we're just making the same point over and over, but good. Okay, air quality element.
Yeah, I made two points on that, things we get, we did in furtherance of this. That's the contract with Sea Frog, in terms of defending the air quality, Ojai area, area plan, in terms of the general plan update with Ventura County. And two, we appealed the, the Bentley CUP permit that denied that flares are subject to the Ojai area plan. And, and subsequent, we have a judge's decision, said we were right on that. So those are two specific things we did.
And there are three others that we did. One was the Paris Accord inclusion. Another one we did is declaring that we, our goal is a hundred percent clean energy. And another one, we got a grant from the APCD where we're going to be, try to be a model for the land- one, we got a grant from the APCD where we're going to be, try to be a model for the landscape, so.
Leaf blowers. Those are three things we did. We should get credit for it.
So, a total of five things, right.
Thank you, sir.
And we're, and we're supposedly encouraging more walking and bicycling, putting in sidewalks and safety features. So, that's good.
Okay, next item, noise element.
Wait, wait.
Oh, yeah, well, you have one?
No, you're on noise, okay.
I believe we did amend our ordinance on noise with respect to leaf blowers in 2017, and then lifted the enforcement moratorium.
Right, but my question was, when I read this, is, it says we enforce the noise ordinance.
Well, we started in 2017 to do that.
Before that, do we, do we have any, or is that what your note to me was on saying in 2018, you're keeping track of it, but it's kind of spotty before that?
Well, that was on, on code enforcement cases, open and closed code enforcement cases.
This is, this is, part of the code enforcement is the noise ordinance, right?
Right, I think, I'm sorry, I think I missed the first part of the question there, I apologize.
Yeah, well, you answered it correctly, though.
Good, okay.
My point, I think we, we did take action in 2017 on our noise element.
And that action was to preserve the existing rules and then enforce them.
Right.
We actually stood a slight amendment to the ordinance, I believe, or maybe not.
I don't think so.
We just started enforcing it then.
But strict enforcement began.
Correct, right.
And my, my question simply is, is that when we, we talk about we continue to enforce the ordinance, just as information for all us in the public, do we issue citations? Because I still get, and we're in 2018, and I know this report is not covering 2018, but I get people saying, you know, like, like the motorcycles, and somebody in a Dodge Charger or something that likes to rev around town, I mean, you can hear it for miles. Do we have any-
That's public highways.
Do we like citations, or?
That doesn't violate the noise ordinance.
The what?
The example you cited of a vehicle revving too much would be maybe a cruising issue. The vehicle code applies, not the noise ordinance.
It's outside our jurisdiction.
Motorcycles and, and cars who are noisy, or let's even go to leaf blowers, which I guess are within our jurisdiction.
Right, leaf blowers are within the city's power, not the driving on public streets.
You pick any one you want. Have we written a citation on anything?
We have not written any citations for leaf blowers.
Okay, so I just was wondering, when it says we continue to enforce the ordinance, I just was wondering how we did it.
We respond to complaints, we do the best that we can to follow up as fast as possible and make contact with either the property owner or the company, and try to get them to comply, and we've had some success with that.
Have you? Okay, well, I just, looking for the result as opposed to the intention.
I just have one question in the noise element. Pending updated if CAL FIRE, Fire Safety and FEMA flood map, is that a, why is this in the noise element? What does CAL FIRE Safety and FEMA flood map have to do with noise?
Why isn't that in safety? The last bullet in noise, why isn't that in safety?
I think that's where it belongs.
It's just the typo, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering what it had to do with noise.
The last bullet in the noise element, why isn't that in the safety element?
Probably needs to go there.
Probably should have, okay.
We'll just do a little arrow for you guys, that's all, we'll just bring it down there.
And then also include the work plan that we assigned to the BAV to update the CAL Fire map.
It says here, uh-
Yeah.
And combustible vegetation.
Did everybody get their, get their letter on this from one of our citizens, who says he objects to the safety element portion of the progress report, because it is not factually correct? Now, I don't know if that's, he's right or not, but he says it does not specify the new change in the city policy that eliminates certain mitigation identified in the safety element to address, anyway, it goes on for two or three pages.
Well, I think since he went to the trouble of writing all this, that we should look at it.
I think we should forward it to staff and let them respond to it.
Yeah, so we should examine it.
Yeah, determine whether it's accurate or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, so, so let's, let's finish up this, and then refer the whole thing, and bring it back up in two weeks, and then we'll give you a chance to-
Sure.
To make, you know, even if it's just the, the pending update of the fire safety under the right category, okay?
Got it.
I was also thinking, under safe, does anybody else have anything under safety element?
Uh-uh.
Wouldn't the, the, I know that safe streets are mentioned in here, like, under circulation or something, but that's, that's a safety issue, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Well.
It's also in the circulation element.
Yeah, right, I was just wondering, we had, in some cases, they mentioned things three times, and in other cases, they, they didn't. Okay, so conservation element?
I'd like to, again, just to reiterate, we have contracted with OBGMA to look at compliance with several elements of, of the conservation element, not just dark skies, also water conservation, and we, and the-
Green Coalition.
The Green Coalition, what am I saying?
Yeah, OBGMA.
Yeah, that's okay.
I was, I was just, I'm having a brain freeze. I barely, I apologize for my age.
Okay.
The Green Coalition, the Green Coalition, we, you know, we ought to put in the fact, we have taken affirmative action in terms of contracting for certain programs with the Green Coalition for some of these goals. And, you know, I, you know, I also think that we have taken in 2017, measures to direct, making sure that we try to include stormwater retention and groundwater recharge in our, reengineering our hardscape in our community. We've done that, and there's, the Complete Streets Committee is attempting to develop, develop guidelines for our public hardscape, and they're in the, they started that in 2017 as well. They haven't done it, but it's, it was started.
That, that's part of conservation?
Well, if you're talking about capturing and sinking water, yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
Well, I just, I had a comment on that. Bill, you, are you?
I'm done.
No, no, you're done.
I'm done.
So, again, the conversation, the, the conversation, the, the conservation element, you know, I pulled it up, and printed it, I made copies for everyone, but I don't think you guys need it, but on this, on this third page of the element, it actually really goes into detail, geological resources, water and watersheds, biological resources, cultural and historical, air quality, scenic views, recreational. I would have liked to see in the conversation element of this, to actually be more inclusive to all of these elements of it, and then actually talk about what we have done. Again, it would really bring up the fact that, that we have a lot more to do, especially in the water and the watershed area.
And, Mayor Johnson, could I add to those comments? I, the parliamentary can stop me, if this is inappropriate, but I wanted to point out that the housing element, the only up-to-date element we have, points out-
The most current element we have.
No, it's the only one that's actually up-to-date, because it's in compliance with state guidelines. The, it quotes in the housing element, I'm quoting, "A review of this current adopted general plan reveals that baseline data relevant to air quality, water resources, and traffic are updated. If funding is available, the city will pursue a comprehensive general plan update that addresses development constraints, and et cetera." My point, and including working to ensure that future, working with other agencies to ensure that future growth forecasts and housing needs assessment, the RHNA that's given us so much trouble, fairly reflect these environmental constraints. Now, in terms of furthering that program, I'm going to suggest that we look at getting this done, because those three most outdated elements of the general plan are conservation element, open space element, and recreation element. They date to 1987, more than 30 years ago, and they in turn base that analysis on something called the Ojai Master Environmental Assessment, also dating to 1987, more than three decades old. I really think that this council should be looking at a future agenda item where at the very least, we commission a new MEA, and then look at, looking, going at-
An MEA?
The Master Environmental Assessment, are making another name for it. In other words, we fulfill, one of the programs of the housing element is to go after some of these most outdated elements of the general plan, that also would help us with our unreasonably high, high RHNA numbers. I think it's overdue. So, I'm gonna hand this out.
So, I just wanted to, to conclude. What I was trying to say is that the conversation, the conservation element is probably one of the most important parts of this communication to us and the community.
And most outdated.
It is the most outdated, but, but again, it just breaks down a lot of major concerns in this community that we're either addressing or not addressing, and I just think in the future, it, it would just behoove us to put this in here, identify the things that we are doing, because it will help us to identify the things that we're not doing. And, and watershed, and wastewater, and there's just a lot of elements of water that haven't been addressed. And again, this isn't just on you, this is on the, on all of us as a whole. So, that's my, that's my take on the conversation. I have a lot more in it, but-
This general, this is from what?
The, my quote comes from the housing element of the general plan.
Oh, okay.
That says that-
Don't say it again, I just wonder where it came from.
It says, that's, it's in the, it's in the hous, the housing element, our current housing element, and it refers to the need, because our baseline data is outdated, that we should go at updating it, and I think that's a program for 2018 we should pursue.
Okay, and at our priority setting meeting, maybe we can finally get this to the top of the list. It needs to be done, and I believe, how much money is in the fund to do this? I know that it isn't set in a separate fund, but I believe you reported something like $100, $180,000.
We have money for it.
Right, yeah.
So, we got the money, we should start getting, now that you've got a new-
Right.
That, that, hit the ground running, okay.
That's the plan.
All right, so, we will just, is there a motion to continue or refer the management?
You had two more elements, if you just wanted to finish, yeah, you had recreation and open space.
On the other side.
Yeah, right, okay. So, any, under the open space is the one that I had, where it says, "Located within a mature urbanized setting, the city has a limited amount of open space," which is true, and that we are going to protect it. So, that all goes back to what Bill was just suggesting, we just-
And Mr. Mayor, the, the fact is that because of our RENA numbers, the vast majority of our open space has overlays on it for affordable housing.
Exactly.
So, you can, you're not protecting open space by putting overlays on them.
So, if we can get that number-
But we have to put the overlays on them in order to qualify, in order to be certified.
Hence, let's lay the groundwork to get that number backed off.
Right.
Well, but we made some choices, I believe, in what we had the overlays on, some good choices, some somewhat specious, because they weren't planning to actually do it, and then, surprise, surprise, you know, you do an overlay, and then you've got a commitment, and the state expects us to live up to the commitment, so.
Mayor, one of the reasons we have the numbers so high, and we had to do so many overlays, because previous, before any of us were involved, previous council, previous administration, their attitude towards the, the SCAG processes for determining RHNA was, "We'll just ignore them, we won't engage." Well, we got stuck with a big number because we didn't engage. We gotta engage.
But even engaging it doesn't help.
Well-
They have an allotment from the state, and they have to allot it out. But let me talk to that real quick, Paul, is, you know, we're having this discussion in VCOG, and it's interesting, we do, we do need to have SCAG. Joey Briglio will come and actually have a discussion with the community and us regarding RENA. More importantly is, the city of Thousand Oaks got their allocations, I think, down to less than 100. So, you can fight these-
Can't fight them.
You can't fight them.
If we have data.
If you have the data, and you have the-
Four to three square miles, all built up.
Well, let me tell you, if the, the area that SCAG represents gets a number from the state, they have to allocate that to all of the communities. So, if Thousand Oaks got it down to 100, so, that, whatever else they were getting is going to be divvied up to everybody else.
Right.
Well, you gotta be in the game.
Yeah.
You gotta be into it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's the, we're not gonna-
And we have tried to fight SCAG on it, and we haven't been successful.
Just wanted to assure the council and the public that staff is fully participating in the process this time. We've been there from the, from the beginning, and we will continue to be there, and we'll be happy to, to work on, give a report to council.
We hope we can give you more ammunition.
We'd be happy to take it.
And I think, I, Mayor, I would think the community would enjoy the conversation, understanding through SCAG what RENA numbers are and what they actually represent.
Sure, I'll get with Mr. Connolly and see if we can get Mr. Briglio to come, and-
That'd be great.
As if he doesn't have enough to do, starting out here.
Okay, well, if there's no objection, we'll refer this, staff will make the appropriate changes, and we'll-
We'll bring it back.
Take a look at this in two weeks, okay?
If, if we can get it done in the next week for the packet, if not, then we'll bring it back as soon as we can.
I ask one final question, to the city manager, who actually prepares the report? You or the CDD director?
CDD director does it.
Okay, so that's another reason why we're, we're, we're at, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, apparently, everybody, you finally got the council's attention, we all read this thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what happens when you end up years in the rear.
And, and the good news is, I think, we'll probably be about, you know, 85% ahead of the rest of the cities in the state, so.
Yeah, right. Okay, we're now on item, what, number three, email retention policy. Is that city manager or city attorney, or both you guys?
Well, I'll give the report, we can both answer questions. I'll try to keep this fairly simple. I think, obviously, you've had a chance to read the report. This is a reaction to the decision of the California Supreme Court in the city of San Jose versus Superior Court, which concluded that the California Public Record Act does apply to electronic communications that city officials and employees send on private devices from private accounts. That had been ambiguous previously in the past, and so with this ruling, we have very clear direction in terms of what we have to follow legally. So, we did work with the city attorney's office to prepare three options for you, and one of them is the recommended option. We've, we've actually, the three options are to flat-out prohibit use of any personal electronic communication for city business. In other words, you would not be able to use your, you know, steve@steve.com email to send and receive city emails, or to do city business. If there was a flat-out ban on that, and if you received an email to your private email account that had to do with city business, the proper response would be, you know, "Please do not use this account, please, you know, send this to, to the, you know, to the subscribed city account," and then you would copy that out to your city account to, to make sure that that is being covered. So, in essence, that's just basically saying you would not use your, your personal device for, for city communications, and if you got it, you would inform that person and then forward that email to the city. Yes, yes?
Can you ask my question?
Okay.
Thank you.
The second option basically would allow the use of your personal electronic communication devices, so I could get an email that would come in to, you know, steve@steve.com, but it would require that the, the person who manages that account to copy and forward those to the, to the city. They could simply be forwarded to the city server, where they would then be retained, and staff would then use that data, if we received a Public Records Act request, to go back and see if there were any communications that pertained. So, that would be the second option. Again, you get to use your own devices, but you would agree to, to, to copy those to the city on a regular basis. So, it wouldn't just be, you know, as you see fit, there would be some understanding that, you know, once a week or something like that. The third option would be to allow you to continue to use your own personal devices, send me an email at steve@steve.com, and I, then, as the public official, under this option, would be responsible for maintaining that, going through a process to, to train and be certified, so that, so that the city knows that the individual official is following the proper procedure, and then it would be incumbent on that official, if we get a Public Records Act request through the clerk, the person would be contacted, and they would agree for the procedure to go through in a timely manner, and work through the emails that they have preserved, and then respond and forward those off to the city. So, those are the three basic options. Staff is recommending the first option, which would be just to prohibit the use of, of your personal electronic devices. Again, get the email at steve@steve.com, would let that sender know, "Please do not use this for city business, please contact me at the steve@ohicity.org site," and then you would forward that email off to the city to, to preserve the record. Be happy to answer any questions. Again, those were the three options that we came up with. There may be other ways to, to comply with the, with the, with the ruling as well, but these, these seem to be the, the most simple and, and cost-effective that we were able to come up with, just for sure.
A question. You, you keep saying devices, but you're really not talking about devices, you're talking about email addresses.
Accounts, correct, that's correct, yeah, because your, your device, I mean, your, your account could be accessed through a number of different devices, so yes, thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Mayor Johnson, Susan?
So, on option one, I wouldn't mind having a city email address, but then, does it have to go through the city? I mean, what I'm trying to say is-
Yes.
It go, so we already, is that, we already have that?
Correct, we already have that, right.
It doesn't, um, it, the way it's set up, it could be set up so that, instead of going to that form, would have used, there would just be our names and our emails.
Well, correct, that is one way to do it, through the website. Of course, if, if I know what your email address is, I could simply put that into the email line and send that directly to you.
I don't want it to go to my account.
Right.
I have thousands and thousands, I have a public email.
I see.
And I get, you know, so many people email me, so I'm constantly fishing for the city emails. So I would like to do, I would like to do that, but I don't wanna eliminate, okay, and, and you're saying that if people do write me, rather than them forwarding it, couldn't I just forward it?
That's what I'm stating, right, that the person, we would then be incumbent on the official to, to forward that.
I could copy them on that email.
Right.
So they would know that's what's happened.
Correct, and let them know to not use your private account in the future, if that was the option, under option one.
My other question is, sometimes we get so many emails from the city, I would like all those to go into a separate city account, is that possible? That's a different subject, I guess.
This one that we get from Luis or something?
Yeah.
That kicks them over to us? Do you keep those all?
We do, right.
They're already in your.
Right, we retain all those. So the ones that have come through us, we have record of those, and Gail is able to search those.
Anything with the OHI, anything with the city server, they.
Is there a way where those would go in, if we all had an account for that, so that we, all our emails from the city, when, when you send them to us.
Right.
For our personal account, we could have a separate email address for that. Maybe no one else wants that, but.
But we have that now.
No, right now, all the city emails go to my, my personal email.
No, but we have a city email account now that we could begin using anytime. I mean, we do use it. I use it.
May I?
I'm talking about a mailbox.
I think I may understand what the council member is asking. So are you saying that when, when we, the city, send something to you, if I'm understanding you correctly, maybe what you're suggesting is that you would come up with a different email account or email address, which would be something that you could give to us?
Okay, I could do that now on my own.
Exactly. You could say, you know, Suzie Francine, the best council member ever, at, you know, wherever, and.
But why wouldn't you just use our own account that we already have?
Well, we'll send it to whatever account individually you want to specify to.
But then if you send it to another account, then you gotta, why not just use the one you have now?
I.
No, you could, but I would like all my, I would love for all my city emails to be one place without me having to constantly.
So they're not co-mingled.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be right with you, Bill. I think that maybe on this, there's enough confusion that each of us individually should be working with Gail and Steve as to what we think would be an idea of how to do it, if it's different than what they're suggesting.
Oh, I like what they're suggesting, I'm fine with that.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause it seems to me that if it comes, if it's coming from our website where it's the council's email, you're try, you're capturing that for the public record right then, right?
Yes.
So the fact that you forwarded it on to us, we don't have to forward it back to you.
That's correct.
It's only the other stuff that comes in that somebody kinda doesn't end run and doesn't.
That's correct. If somebody knew your private email address and then sent that to your private email address and said, you know, "Mr. Mayor, I have a problem with this pothole in front of my house," or whatnot, that would then be considered a, a city business communication and, and subject to the Public Record Act.
Bill?
Yeah, I, I circulated a public document to everyone that I got from the League of California Cities on this matter, and the League of California Cities is not near as stringent as the staff recommendation here, in terms of going with number one, I would, I think it's fair to say. And I'm particularly concerned with the issue of constituent communications and inhibiting constituent communications. If somebody has an issue with, say, a pothole, and they wanna talk with me by email about it.
Right.
I get, I understand that it's technically, that's city business.
It is a public record now.
I understand that, but is it something that ought to be real-time on the city server as opposed to something searchable? I mean, I'm perfectly happy, or, you know, real-time searchable. I'm perfectly happy to have a dedicated email account for any city business.
Yeah.
And have the, the records manager have authorization to, to look at that.
Sure, and that's.
Anytime.
And that's an option.
But that's different, that's a lot different from having all, all the IT staff being able to see, watch what's going on, because the deputy city clerk in that function is working for the council. That's not the case with IT staff. They're, they're under the management of, of, you know, the hierarchy of, of the city staff.
Sure.
So I'm, I have a lot of heartburn personally about one and two, and, but I don't have a lot of heartburn about getting a, a separate email account that, that is, is absolutely, you know, searchable, but not something that's where every communication in real-time is on the city server, having to do with, anything to do with city business, including any concern someone has with what's going on in the community. The other issue I have is that the server I use has a lot of capability the city server doesn't have, in terms of attachment sizes and things like that. And so again, I, I think we can be in compliance without having to have the prohibition, that's my preference.
Well, I, I completely agree. Either options two or three would also, we believe, allow the city to be fully compliant. I think a lot of it may just be how, where you wanna put the burden, or, or what you're comfortable with at the end of the day. I completely understand.
Yeah, I, I will confess to being definitely way out of my depth, but after one does whatever you, whether we refer it back to the city or whatever, and I'm somebody who's not happy with the city, and I'm trying to find out what kinda skullduggery we've been up to.
Right.
I say, "Yeah, I know that you've got this one, and this one, and this one, but I wanna see Mr. Johnson's personal emails, to see how much he's been doing on the side." Or, "I wanna see his email, and I wanna know what all those deleted messages are." I mean, this is not a foolproof system, is it?
No.
I mean, it, it just seems to me that it gets more and more complicated.
But it would not allow a member of the public to have direct access to your private email account.
Right, but when the attorneys send the paperwork in.
Only a court order would take that.
From the Bentley Ranch, or whoever, and wants to know, then everybody has to start combing through this stuff.
So if I could jump in here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The benefit of option one as opposed to either option two or three, and not that, these are all options, there's no mandate here, but the benefit of option one, shifting the council members' emails related to city business to a city server, is that the expectation, although I can never guarantee it, is that we would be able, in the event of litigation over a records request, if someone kept claiming, "Oh, there's one more, there's one more, there's another one," to say to a reasonable judge, "No, Your Honor, we've searched the city server, there's a policy requiring city email related to city business to be done on the city's server, we've searched that server, we've used these search terms, we found these emails, here's what we have, stop this, this witch hunter, stop this." And the expectation would be, at that point, we could stop it and prevent depositions of the council members and prevent a judge looking into your email accounts. If you continue to use private email accounts for city business, the ability to shield those private email accounts from searching of non-public records is diminished. But it's a risk choice for the council, there's not a requirement.
We had an incident about a year ago with, with a house, I think it was, where we were, we were required to turn in all our emails, remember that?
And that's the process that we've been using at the moment, is the council members, when we receive a request for council member emails, the clerk sends it out to the council, you each search your email accounts and respond back, and that process is fine, and it's effective, and it works, provided, of course, the council's, is responsive, which they have been, to the records requests, and that process is fine, and that's legal and can continue. Staff has suggested shifting to an alternative approach in order to reduce the possibility of the council being forced to be deposed about your compliance with that process.
Okay.
But that's a risk choice for the council.
So the recommendation is, is that there be a depository or a repository at the, at the city, where when things come in to our individual emails, we can then answer that email by saying, "This is city business, and we incur you, please go through."
Correct.
And give them the other email address.
Correct.
And then send a copy of whatever we just received.
Correct.
Now, is that, is that presumed, then, that that would then come back to us to be answered, or?
The council members will be able to access their council member at ohi-city.org account and send it receive from that account. And admittedly, there will be a transition period.
And once they do that, then everyone, then the, the thread, or whatever they call it, the, the, you can, you know, archive everything.
Right.
Answers, answers, back and forth.
Right, then it'll be captured on the city server, searchable by the clerk, which.
Okay.
Can you clarify that?
Sure.
Are you saying if I reply, I often reply to people individually.
Sure.
In order to do, I have to go through the server now?
Don't have to now.
You don't have to now. The question is, would you want to?
Recommendation is that you'd have to.
Number one, I couldn't just reply to people?
If, if you receive an email to your individual account, the, the heart of recommendation one would be, in reply, you say to the person, "Thank you for your concern, please shift to my city email account."
No, no.
Copy it, reply, copying that account, and then when they reply, now it's captured on the city side.
Then you go into that.
And then you log into your city account.
But I'm talking about, it already is coming to me.
Right.
Through the city account. Are you saying I can't reply to them privately? With my private email?
Your response is now public record, Susan.
My, everything is.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
That's the downside for this.
Right. If, and to be clear, your response is public record, no matter which account you use. That's the heart of the San Jose case.
And it's public record now.
And everything that people send us is automa, I don't know if people really know that, that everything is public record, that once they.
If it's.
If it's related to city business, certainly your personal, your personal, your personal business is not city business.
When they email ten, all the whole, the full council, staff, it's automatically public record, okay?
If it's relating to city business, with a few exceptions.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, it's not necessarily public record, it's subject to a public records request.
Right. And then, if, you know, the privileges that we already have still apply.
Right.
Right, attorney-client privilege, a lot of things are protected.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate that I, I don't think this kind of thing should be done primarily for the convenience of staff, you know, or, or even for our convenience. It should be, you know, I'm really concerned that people may not feel comfortable communicating on knowing that it's a city server, you know, and I, I just think for me, that it is just as being in compliance to, to have a separate email account.
Mm-hmm.
On my own server. I mean, I can have, I can have a bunch of email accounts on my server, and, and, and I just, I just, I have a little, I, I just really, I think it accomplishes the same end without it being, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, and correct me if I'm saying something wrong here, Matt. The problem is that if you know that all of your emails are going through the city server, and they get a public records request, you don't have to worry about it. The issue becomes, we get a public records request, we submit what we say is the communications we've had, and opposing council says, "No, I don't believe it. I want a copy of his entire email account to go through."
Right.
So that I can determine whether or not there's any emails that haven't been turned over to me. Now, everything that you, all of your, really tough with me, because it comes in through a law practice, I have many client, many emails that are subject to the attorney-client privilege, that I would, you know, I would have a problem turning that information over.
Right.
For somebody to peruse. But if you do it on a standard email, all your private emails are subject to having to discover them to the other side.
We could, you could set up a separate email account on another server.
We, we would have defenses in, in the case of.
I understand.
Not that we're gonna give in to anybody else.
You could, you and I could set up a separate email account, that would still be on a private server, that would only be city business on that.
Oh, sure.
You know, private server. I'm just saying, that also is in compliance.
Mm-hmm, just like keeping it on where it is right now, and.
But it'd just be a different email account.
Well, that's assuming that.
Not co-mingled.
All of the emails go into that one address.
Right.
That's a big assumption, isn't it?
Well, I would quickly forward it into the mailbox.
So, Mayor, can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah, Randy.
I'm as, unlike you, and when I sit in Libby, when I sit in Libby Bowl meetings, Mariana and Linda and Amber, they're, they're the people that tell me what we're doing regarding websites and all this stuff, and at the office, I've got my wife and I've got Diane, so this is way above my pay grade, but just, I guess, some simple questions would be, like Bill saying that his system has the ability to attach another server, what if my, what if mine doesn't?
It does. It does.
Okay, I'm just.
Everybody has that capacity.
Okay, no, an additional server.
Additional accounts on the.
An additional account.
You can have as many mailboxes as you want.
Yeah, I'd say.
Okay, so again, see, that shows you what I don't know. And so then, so the second, 'cause obviously I don't have, I don't have an additional one. So, I mean, I just look at, look at this as, what can the city provide me, whether it's a, you know, a laptop that's set up specifically for city communications? Can the city give me a cell phone that's set up specifically for city communications? I mean, what is, what can the city do to ensure that all of us are complying properly, and it seems like the compliance should be on something that you're accountable, that the city's accountable for? I really struggle with the fact that.
I don't wanna carry two phones.
No, 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 that's not gonna happen.
I'm just talking out loud, I'm just saying.
But Randy has the floor.
Yeah, I'm just talking out loud, only for the fact that, that if we keep our, the system the way it is, then we're accountable when something comes in to send it back to you, stating that this is a conversation that should be on this server or through this communication system. That's where I'm just lost in it, you guys, is.
We're gonna send all our pothole complaints, and then they're really.
Yeah, I mean, I have a sense that this is gonna stifle communication between the public, as well as in between.
Right.
It's not that difficult.
Listen, I know, Bill and I are the experts in this department, and Paul Blatz is pretty knowledgeable.
I didn't know that.
Okay.
Heck, you are.
I, I, no, I, well, I think you know enough to know, I'm not an expert, but we know enough. I think my main concern is the public, even though there's something, it is different for the public to write us directly, there is something different about that. And a lot of our emails are already going through the server. So I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine, actually, either way, and I'm fine supporting, I have the same, the, I share the concerns, now that you've raised them, Councilmember Wyrie, I share those concerns, I just hadn't thought of it. So are you saying, which option?
Well, I'm with three, because with an additional provision of having a, setting up a, a separate and additional email account on, on my existing server account.
Yeah, that seems the easiest to me.
That's what I'd like to do.
I, I would support that. That seems the easiest.
Mr. City Manager.
For the record, I, for staff, actually, I think option three is probably the easiest for us to implement as well. So our recommendation was more based on, I think, trying to, well, come up with a way that would be.
Risk management.
Right, and, and try to take some of the obligation off the elected officials, but, but again, I, I'm not surprised that three is, is, is being seen as a, as a viable alternative, and it definitely is.
Well, it would be a lot easier, because the way that it's done, that I do it now, is whenever I get anything in from the city or communication between council members, is I just archive it into a folder.
Right, that's.
That is a city council folder.
Right, I do the same thing.
But if I don't wanna have it go to the Blatz Law Firm, in with all the other emails I get, I'll just set up a new email address called, you know, Paul Blatz City Council or something.
And then automatically, is it in a searchable folder?
And then everything goes there.
Right.
And if I happen to get one in the other, I'll just forward it to that email, and then it's gonna be there, and I archive it in the same spot.
You can junk list the other one to make sure it doesn't get.
That's right.
And then you, you move it.
It's hard if someone can do it for you in a minute.
So I say that that's probably the easiest thing to do.
Are you gonna pay for that service?
It doesn't cost anything.
It doesn't cost anything.
It doesn't cost anything.
No, you're just saying to have someone do it for you. Who's that someone?
Yeah, Randy and I are gonna have to have keepers that we're gonna look at.
Mayor and I are on tight budgets.
I'll do it.
I'll tell you, I am sure that, that Councilman Wyrie or myself would be glad to set you up a Gmail account. That might take all of maybe two or three minutes.
Yeah, I'm gonna trust you two. So.
And, and all of our voicemails, and, and all of our texts, is that next?
No, that's next.
That could be next, but right now, it's not on the table.
It's only email?
Yeah.
The case law is a little unsettled on text messages and voicemails and Snapchat, for those who are using that. The expectation there, although it's not yet, you, there are millennials who vote.
Is Snapchat the one that instantly destroys?
Not anymore. Now it stays.
Oh, darn, yeah, right.
Um, on those ones, the current expectation that I would give to you as the reliance is, in the normal course of business, you don't retain text messages or voicemails. You receive it, you listen to it, or you read it, and then you do something about it, and then you delete them. Now, some phones keep them, but the expectation is that they're not retained in the course of business, so my current advice is that text messages, Snapchats, voicemails, things like that, transitory things, are not public records because they're not retained in the course of business. The caveat is that we could get a decision tomorrow that changes this. The, the trend in all of these is to make more and more and more records, public record, or subject to the Records Act. Transparency is in.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, this is gonna top it off, I have a Twitter account, I don't know how to tweet.
You're tweeting?
Tweet, tweet, I'll do it here, tweet, tweet. So, again, just for the final on this, I just want to be clear that a message comes in here, because I get, I, my email on my phone, I could probably eliminate the emails process from my phone, it would probably help me anyway, so I'm not reading emails while I drive, so that way it'll only come to the server in my house.
It's a mailbox, it's a mailbox.
My mailbox, okay, all right, all right, I told you, I'm learning here, it's a curve. All right, so I'm going to my mailbox, okay, so that means that anything that comes in here now is not public records.
You can access your email.
I don't know, hear me out, let me finish, because I've eliminated the emails coming into my phone. That's the only thing that's on public rec--
No, you haven't, no, you haven't.
I ca, I can do that.
You can, you can read them off your phone.
I can't, but I can eliminate that, that's what I'm trying to say, so I won't receive any more emails--
Don't have any.
That's out of our--
Come on, guys, we--
It's up here, it's up here.
It's in the cloud, no, don't take me there.
I think that--
This, this is all a conspiracy, Randy, to get you and me to retire early. Yeah, right, okay. Paul, did you have something that--
No, all I was gonna say is it's, conceptually, I'm sure you'll, you, it would take you maybe a fifteen-minute crash course to grasp this.
You'll like it, you'll like it.
Okay, so are we gonna, um, are we taking action on this?
Okay, what, do I have a motion? Does anyone with--
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Number three, right, Bill?
I will entertain a motion, what is it?
Allow use of personal electronic communication accounts only if the electronic communications are stored for a minimum of two years and are searchable, with the recommendation that we all get a special account, so that we don't have to search through our sixty million other emails, so they're already there.
Second. Second to motion, yep.
Okay, so it's moved to the second.
No more discussion on this.
Randy and I'll probably have to abstain, just because we don't understand the content, but, okay, yeah, it's number three, Randy.
I need to call my wife.
Yeah, whatever this is, yeah. Okay, is there any, no, I won't even ask for further discussion, is there any objection to, or do we need a motion for this?
Probably oughta have--
Oh, we have the motion, do we need a vote?
I think we're ready for the vote.
Okay, we're gonna be on record.
Sure.
Have to perjure ourselves by pretending we know what we're doing.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protamhanyi?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
You and I'll share a cell--
Councilmember Francina?
When they come to get us.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
You'll like it, you'll like it.
You'll like it.
All right, okay.
Try it, you'll like it, try it, you'll like it.
Motion's passed, thank God, it's behind us.
All right, it's, it's only nine twenty, huh, didn't take long.
No, we got, yeah, we got more, though. Now, we're on the Libby Bowl Committee with two patient folks in the audience at least. The recommendation to consider--
Fee waiver.
With a fee waivers, and we do have one card here on item four, oh, Steve.
Steve spoke to this last year.
Handout from Steve.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston, and city council members and staff, I, I come tonight to ask you a question. I, I see that you have the proposal from city staff to, to grant fee waivers to a number of good organizations, one of which, the Independence Day Committee, I have been associated with in the past, I think that's a great thing. But I come not to really comment on those, but rather to ask a question. How is it that, that a request was put in, and by what mechanism to result in staff recommending to you that a waiver request be granted? I gave to Gail, and she has passed around to you, I think, an email that I sent to Amber three weeks ago, asking what is the process? In this case, I was asking on behalf of the Memorial Day Committee, another nonprofit, veterans-oriented organization with which I have a very mild affiliation, mostly support, and I have no, I have no response. So, I don't know how it is that anyone else came to the point of having a waiver request that the city staff could absorb and recommend either granting or not granting to you. So, that's my question. I have been told that while Amber does not work here anymore, she is still responsible for Libby Bowl, and that requ, that, and that information on that topic needs to go to her, so that's where it went, but I don't know what else to do to get my question answered. Thank you.
Is, is that accurate? I think that it's--
Sorry you didn't get a response, Amber is still working for the city, and she is still handling the Libby Bowl as a part-time employee.
Oh, okay.
So, and I, I do not know why you didn't get a response, I apologize for that.
Okay.
I will follow up, so.
Maybe, maybe there is a process that, that others on the list that you are considering tonight have followed.
There is.
If there is, I would really like to know what it is. Thank you very much.
I have a copy.
Okay, I don't have any more cards on the subject, uh, Mr. City Manager, are you prepared?
Well, and Randy, you might want to help out on this, I'm not the complete expert on this, but yeah, there is a, is a process that the committee follows, and there is a application form that, if I understand, is mailed out to those who had requested waivers in the past, and then they're given a, a time to respond to that, and then the committee takes a look at those recommendations and brings them forward to city council. So, that is, that is the process, and it's done annually.
So, if you'd like me to add a little to this, on this, on the second page of the report, it actually states the commission recommend, the committee, it's not commission, the committee recommendations, and that was for the Bowlful of Blues twenty-seven to twenty-eighteen, the Independence Day, the Ojai Film Festival, the Music for Kids, Performance to Grow On, and the Safety Harbor Kids. So, what happens is each of these applicants have submitted a, a request for a fee waiver, and normally, in the past packets, we, council would receive those, I don't know why they didn't happen this time, but, but they're on, they're on file, we have them.
Yeah, we, we, I can, very quickly, just because it was taking, it was a lot of paper, and we felt that it was just gonna be considered wasteful, and that's why we were trying to make it very clear on the first page of the report that they were available at the clerk's office, and we have copies here if anybody would like to review those, so we were not trying to, to hide those.
So, what you'll see is, is there were some requests for fee waivers, some received a hundred percent, some received half, some received none, okay? And so, what the, and what the, pardon me, and what the committee does is they look at, on that application, on your Libby Bowl fee waiver program guidelines, you'll see that there are eleven points of criteria that we're gonna look at, that the committee looks at. Actually, I don't vote on these as a committee member, I, because as a, as being a council member, I feel it's important that I be able to deliberate if there's any questions or any changes or any need up here. So, this is the member of the Libby Bowl Committee that made these recommendations, based on this criteria, Steve, and also based on the submittal process, that they be submitted properly, that they complete that submittal entirely, and that we actually have an interview process where they can publicly come in and talk, and present themselves and their case, and then again, the committee votes on it and decides what recommendations to make to council, and again, council can change all this, it, it will.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question to staff. Are the Libby Bowl fees based on actual costs?
Yes and no. An actual study was never actually done to do that, they were based on to try to have some consistency with the fees that had been established by the Libby Bowl Foundation. If you recall, the Libby Bowl Foundation originally was administering the, the Bowl facilitation and bookings for the city, and when the city took that back from the Libby Bowl Foundation and those criteria were brought to council, it was, it was based on the fees the foundation had set, because it was felt that, you know, again, we were trying to find something that wouldn't be too much of a shock to the community, and, and it seemed like those were, were reasonable, and, and were, were, you know, the applicants seemed to be working with that, and it seemed to be, at least in a, in a, in a price area that they could, that they could afford, right?
And one additional thought on that is the fact that the Libby Bowl Committee has actually looked at the fees, and we're in the process of that, of reviewing them, and making some changes and recommendations to council.
Okay.
So, that is coming back to us.
So, so, the fee is the rental fee?
Right.
And on top of that, are there public works fees? Or does that fee include cleanup?
That includes cleanup, rental, right, correct.
So, so, it's not as over waiving income, or actually incurring expense?
That's true, there's, there's staff time involved with processing the applications and--
If we look at a fourteen hundred dollar fee waiver, and assuming that the fourteen hundred dollars represents somewhat what it costs, then we are looking at contributing fourteen hundred dollars to that event.
In essence, yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question on this first one, the Bowlful of Blues had said that they had, and I know Lanning's talked about, you know, contributing things to the Recreation Department, if that is a criteria or one of the reasons for doing this, I was just curious as to what was the value of the contribution of band equipment in relationship to waivers of fees, because this is, the, they, they sell tickets to this thing, right?
Yeah.
And I assume it's meant mostly as a service, but--
I, I don't know what the value of that donation was.
Do all the applicants know that we're discussing this tonight? They know we're discussing it, so if they had concerns, they could be here--
Right, to address them.
--and answer questions. They do know, they're--
And I'm just thinking, the people who made the decision was the Advisory Committee or the Libby Bowl, so whatever, that's where my questions are directed, at the Advisory Committee as opposed to the applicants. So, in one case, it's what's, amount, well, in two cases, the amount was fourteen hundred dollars requested, and one is a retroactive for a previous season?
Twenty sixteen, Bowlful Blues. So, so they weren't aware of a fee waiver process at that point in time, so they requested that they be able to come back again based on the fact that, and, and again, one of the reasons that we, that, that the committee approved this waiver was the fact that they give back so much to the community.
Yeah.
Now, we haven't gotten an actual cost of the equipment that they've bought and provided back to the school system, it's something I'm sure they could give us information on, but that's one of the, probably the biggest criteria for waiving the fees, is what they do for the community.
Yeah, and I can see going forward, I mean, if, well, even if we had known about it before, we might very well have thought this was a great idea, but doing it after the fact, I guess, gives me a little concern, but then I go through these others, and they look like they're kinda obvious, they're community-oriented free activities, so, you know, we're, we're just helping out on that. But then we get to one over here where it says nine hundred and fifty, no amount requested, was, was there any waiver on that?
Yeah, they get nine fifty.
So, and then it says specifically intended for children, what is, is there a part of it that's not intended for children?
It's the storytelling festival.
Is there a fee that the children paid to come in and listen to the storytelling?
Yeah.
So--
And they have some free events, they do have free events at the Art Center for children.
Right, but that doesn't have anything to do with Libby Bowl.
No, no, wait, that wasn't, that wasn't.
But it seems like in these other cases, it directly relates, that there's no charge to the people who, the general public that benefit, whereas this other, I mean, I have nothing against children hearing stories, I just thought it was kinda curious as to how that, that worked, and then, then there's a zero in here.
Well, the Safe Harbor Kids, they didn't have a complete application.
Right, and why would that be a ten thousand dollar waiver?
That was the request.
Of, of days that they want to do reserve the Bowl?
That's what they asked for, they didn't get it.
Right.
Right, but I just wondered why some was fourteen hundred and this one's ten thousand.
It's the same thing, if you look on the first page, it shows you your fee application fee, the facility rental, refilled your damage deposit, your maintenance fund fee, so all of these are cumulative into how many days you're gonna actually use the facility. Most people use it between one to two days.
So, are they asking for it for a longer period of time than, than what is permitted?
Pardon me, a request for ten thousand dollars would mean they'd probably request it for a long period of time, again--
But were those dates even available for them to--
They may, they may-- They may not have been, I'm trying to say.
Well, that was a zero, so, going back to Paul's original question, are we incurring the, the cleanup for all these events now at city expenses opposed to them, or is that--
They're required to clean up, and they're still required to apply a cleaning deposit, and if they don't, then it's taken out of that.
And, and they're still required to pay the maintenance fee, if they're selling tickets over fifteen dollars per person.
Now, do I have a motion, Bill?
Real quick question, for the record, when a Mr. Quilisi comes, is Amber the designated person to get the application materials and policies from?
Yes.
And if that, and if, and if he's not getting a response from that individual, who's the next in the chain to go to?
Myself.
All right, thank you.
So, this has not gone back to the Recreation Department?
The Recreation Department? I don't understand.
I thought I understood you to say, tell me that with the departure of the employee--
Ojai Day has gone back to the Recreation Department, that was one of the functions that Ms. Young had, yeah. We're, we're still trying to--
All of these waivers were put through the Libby Bowl Committee.
Yes, sir.
I'll move approval.
I approve, yeah.
Okay, got a motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, should we call the roll on this, 'cause it's money, or what?
Right.
Yeah, Steve? No? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor, Mayor Protamhanyi?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
I think the committee did a great job.
Mr. Mayor, could we take a very brief break?
Sure. Okay, okay, we're in recess. Okay, okay, we're in recess. I'll get a chance to get... Okay, we're, we're back in session, we got, what, a couple items here, the next one up is five, adoption of revised employee handbook. Are we prepared to do that tonight, or is that one, oh, pardon me, we have another one that is, what's the RDA?
Oh, yeah, if we could, if we could take care of the successor agency item, that was the one that got, that used to be H on your consent calendar, so...
Where is it?
So it would still be in your binder, then?
And we'll need to...
Under H?
Temporarily adjourn the council meeting and adjourn and...
Right, thank you.
Open up that item.
Oh, yeah, that's what happens when I don't bring my revised...
Now, it was F.
It was F?
It was F. Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule?
Correct, right, so, we believe that this would be the last action that needs to be taken.
Were we adjourned yet?
Did we adjourn or called a...
We have to adjourn and reconvene?
Yeah, well, we just convene into the RDA.
Yeah, you don't need to adjourn, counsel.
Someone give me the, the secret code for finding this.
It's, in our packet.
Yeah, sorry, the, the agenda was amended to move that out of the consent calendar and into the, and into the proper place on the agenda where it should be under the successor agency, so...
This wasn't approved under consent?
It was not.
In the wrong spot, okay, I get it.
Yes.
Metropolitan, wait a minute, okay.
I thought we did approve it, okay.
Recognize, yeah, I think we did say it, but I don't think we had the authority to...
Well, the, right, the amended agenda, which would be the one that, that prevails at this point, had it moved off the consent calendar and, and under the successor agency.
Since your attorney, do we have some kind of ritual where I had continued to recess the...
Yeah, just recess the council meeting, and then open the other one.
Council meeting's in recess for a moment here, and now we are calling the, what, the successor...
The development agency, yeah.
...group into session, and then this is the last...
So, the successor agents already approved the last and final ROPS, but because, but the state is saying that we still need to approve an eighteen nineteen as well, because that needs to, because they have not yet finalized on the ROPS, the, the final ROPS, and so they still need something done for eighteen nineteen as well. So it's, it's really a timing issue. The Oversight Board heard this matter on Monday and did approve it, and so it is for your council tonight with staff's recommendation to approve. It recognizes the two remaining obligations, which is the, the payment of the park and ride lease, and I'm drawing a blank on the other one.
Loan.
And the debt, of course, and the payment of the loan back to the city's general fund, which was the loan that the city had given to the redevelopment, redevelopment agency many years back. So, that is, as that is coming back, we're able to put that into the general fund, with the exception of the twenty percent that has to go into the housing set aside fund.
Okay, so the result of getting our paperwork in order, will it, then the state will pay, send that money?
They're gonna, it's gonna be administered, I'm the chair of the, the board, so, I'll give you a little report. From this point forward, the entire loan and, and administration of the successor agency is going to be done through the county.
Right.
So, we no longer are going to administer it, so what it'll do is it'll go back through the county, as it has been going to the county, then they take their share of whatever comes back, and then it comes to us.
Okay, but...
So it's just going to be administered by the county rather than by the successor agency.
Correct.
This particular action is required of us because of a timing situation.
That is correct.
Paperwork is in order, where else we'll get that, that money back, and thereafter the money will come through the county, and how far...
And the county's actually going to make our payment to the school district, too.
And how, how far to the future do these payments run?
Let's see, we've got the lease with the parking ride, I think, through twenty twenty four, and then what's the amortization on the repayment of the loan, I want to say it goes...
Another four or five years, anyway.
Yeah.
The ROPS listed to twenty twenty nine.
To twenty twenty nine, so...
Okay, and it's around two point eight million, is that correct?
Yeah, which is correct, this would be three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar annual payment.
I just have one quick question, Mayor. Paul, I just heard you say that the county is, are we going to be charged for the county providing the service, is that what I heard?
No, we will not, and in fact...
You know that it's the allocation of the money, that when they're between the different jurisdictions that are entitled to receive the pass-through, like schools get a certain amount, another, and this is...
Correct, and, and the state took away from us, I want to say, was it the year or the year prior, to even be able to recoup our administrative costs, so, right now, actually, we're having to administer this, and we're, we're basically having to eat that staff time, so, it's, it's actually a win-win.
Looks good.
Okay, now, and, and on this, Paul, the, was there some decision made by the state when this thing got phased out, the successor agency was created, that had to do with interest on the money we loaned?
Yeah.
Came ineligible or something?
Yeah, there was several things that the state took away, they took away any redevelopment funds that we had, which I don't remember what it was at the time they took it, I don't even think you were here then, Rudy, but it was a hefty amount, it was in the neighborhood, I believe, of two point eight million, something like that, they took that away, but then they...
Tax increment that we'd already received down the bank.
Yeah, but then we had, we had lent the agency money.
Right, right.
And they were beginning, they were saying that they weren't going to allow the agency to pay back the full amount of what the city had lent them, but we ended up doing pretty well there. I think it was reduced, though, from, my recollection is, it was reduced from the neighborhood of five million to, to three point three million or something like that.
Right, right, we fought over interest rates and everything, they ended up making us take the low interest rate based on rate.
But we, but we were using a higher interest rate, so we actually got all the money back, we're just getting it back at a lower interest rate, as I recall.
Right.
This was a few years ago.
Get the principal back.
Yeah, right, yeah, but we're also getting it back over another how long, another eleven years?
Twenty-nine through twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor?
At least we're getting it back, and it comes back at the tune of, how much per year?
Well, this one's three hundred and sixty-five.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation of the Oversight Board.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moving second, and any further comment or discussion? If not, I'll, the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protamheini?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have no further business for the successor agency?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Say goodbye to it.
Right.
Okay, I got to be here for the, the first and the last. That's true, I was the first director of the redevelopment agency.
Really?
We had no money, we just got a big net.
We got a lot of money and then got it stolen from the state, by the state. Basically.
Okay, we are now back in session for the council meeting, we are on item number five, and is this something that we want to carry over along with the labor negotiation, or is this something, oh, no, we were gonna, we have...
May I make a suggestion?
We have a resolution that's got what, yeah, go ahead, what suggestion?
I, I think we have a, we do, I think we all felt like there was maybe additional reordering that needs to be made in terms of dividing the benefits from the compensation, but I'm going to offer one thing just to support the city manager and his, that maybe we could just pass one piece of it tonight. I think you would very much welcome at least passing E, that'll, that gets rid of the two floating holidays.
Yes, yes, we recommend that.
You already are making plans, and, so what I'm suggesting is, while, down on page five point five, attachment A, one of two, I'm going to suggest that we, we know more work needs to be done, but that we at least, I'll make a motion to approve part E.
How about A, E, and F?
I, I'll be, I'll be fine with that, too, A, E, and F.
Okay, and then we'll just come back on the other two.
Yeah, so asking me my motion to approve those three elements.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Second?
Sure, I'll do it.
Discussion? If not, do we need roll call, or just without objection?
Consensus is fine. Consensus is fine.
Okay, if there's no objection, so ordered, okay. We'll see the balance of that next meeting, now we go to what?
Council protocol.
Oh, protocols, yeah, okay. I think the explanation for why we're dealing with it is fairly clear, that it's overdue, and...
Right, council directed, this is a goal, so we're bringing this back to council. Staff did as much of the work as we could on it, and then really felt that, you know, so I want to explain to the council why we don't have a recommendation from the city manager, because I really feel that these are council's protocols, and so we put the recommendation to either give direction to staff, also recognizing that council might want an opportunity to perhaps mull this over, give it some thought, another option that we put out for council's consideration, perhaps you might want to appoint an ad hoc committee if, if, if you felt that was necessary, a couple members of council could then work with, with staff to, to work through these and come back with a recommendation to the whole council. So, I'm happy to walk through with the changes, but most of what staff did was, was just to try to get it current and, and up to date and recognize any inconsistencies.
Suggestion, if, I would be happy to serve on a subcommittee with another member of the council to kind of go through and, you know, kind of come back with a, a council recommendation to the council, and then we can amend what from there, is that...
I'll work with you on that.
I have one comment, Mayor. Sure, real quick, one major error, I think, just to pay note to, on page six dash three one, attachment C, where it says, and Ojai voters approved changing the council's leadership structure from an appointed ceremonial mayor, chosen by rotation, actually, that's not correct. The rotating mayor had co-designated duties, three of them, only one of which was ceremonial. The appointed mayor still, in other words, there were no changes in the authority of the appointed mayor to the elected mayor, so it's simply not true that it was, that the appointed mayor was only ceremonial, the appointed mayor chaired the meetings, had the nomination authorities per code, had all of the code duties that the current mayor has, the elected mayor, so that's actually not correct.
Well...
All right? Huh?
I would...
It was not a ceremonial mayor.
Just delete that.
Just delete the word ceremonial.
Yeah, we agree with that, that's...
And then, and then the other thing is, I think that, well, no, that's it, that's, I think the rest of it can come up when we get it back.
Okay, so, will the city manager arrange to set something up with Randy and me to kind of go through this with you and see if we...
Yes, yes, myself and, and I would ask Gail to, to join us as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
That way we won't have to try to do it all here in the open session of wordsmithing. I, I also had a, a comment regarding what, what you brought up, Bill, and that was, and I said, you know, and the duties are, if any, so, anyway, we'll do that in committee and bring it back to you. Okay, I guess that brings us to the council report section, is that where we are on the agenda? What did I do with my, it's someplace, yeah.
It's not of intent.
Okay, we've got, we're on the last page, council member reports, Paul, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Suzie?
Um, well, Ojai Earth Day is shaping up to be our best Earth Day ever, we have so many people working on it, it's going to be really nice, laid out like a village, it's going to be different, but is this the time that...
Pearl Bucks the sequel?
Huh?
I said Pearl Bucks the sequel?
Yeah.
The Good Earth Day?
Yeah, I wish, yeah.
For those of you who remember The Good Earth.
Was that a restaurant?
Well, maybe, somebody used it, it was a popular novel at one time.
Horrible pancakes.
Is this also the time that we talk about future addenda items, or is that a second round?
Okay, anything?
So, just, the Libby Bowl met again today, and we're finalizing our recommendation and presentation to staff or to council on, I believe it's March twenty-seventh, yes? Is that our next council?
If, if the committee is ready and, and can get your report in, we'll get you on the twenty-seventh, if not, we'll get you on a subsequent agenda.
That's all I have on that.
Bill, you have a report of any sort?
No.
Okay.
I have future agenda, but nothing.
Okay, let's go to future agenda then, what do we have? Suzie, did you have something you wanted to do?
Well, first I want to know how, how full are, is, are the next few agendas?
March twenty-seventh is looking rather packed, the meetings after that are not looking too bad.
Okay, 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 well, I would like to see the cannabis regulations come back on the agenda, but do we need to do more work before we...
Well, I was gonna, may I speak, Mayor?
Yeah.
On this issue?
We're, we're on the...
We're working together on this. We, I think that we actually are ready at the next council meeting to finish our discussion, well, we, we do have to sit down with you guys, but by the time...
Right.
I think we're ready to do some more due diligence and come back to a report at the next council meeting, doesn't involve staff, but just our report.
Just a report, okay.
In terms of the report from the cannabis discussion committee, which is Suzie and I.
Mr. Mayor, what, what is the report going to concern itself with?
About what, what's, what's gone on, the, what's happened so far with the licensees that we have, and also what's gone on with the changes in the state regulatory and the implications for what we may have to do here in Ojai, or, or the issues that have come, have come up from the new state regulatory structure, and we're, we're ready to, to give that report at the next meeting.
But is it just a report, or is there a recommendation?
Well, we, we probably would have some recommendations, but that would be up to council to accept or not.
Right, but if, if we're going to agendize it, I would hope that there'd be a recommendation not just...
We will have discussion, we will have, we will have discussions and recommendations, yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's some urgency.
There's some urgency on a couple of issues.
Yeah.
That we'd like to agendize so that we do it properly, you know?
Okay, well, considering the topic and the length of time, the city manager says we're packed for the next meeting, so, two meetings out?
It's fine with me.
And that would be what, April what?
Tenth.
April tenth?
Tenth.
We'll take it.
Okay.
And then...
And the, the presumption and responsibility is on the subcommittee to...
It's on us.
To put the report together and have it in the packet according to the usual...
Right.
Deadline, so we all have a chance to read it in advance, okay?
Yeah.
Agreed.
You'll be back.
I just have one question regarding it, and that is that we get a pro and con on every, any and all recommendation that you make, that we get a lot of fact and we get a lot of information, because what we're going to be talking about is pretty important to the community.
Yeah, there's a lot of different levels.
Right, so I...
Some things are more time dated than others that we need to talk about.
Right, but I, but again, I don't want, I, I'd like the information to be able to make a, my own personal decision on it, not necessarily a biased report based on what the committee would like to see done regarding marijuana and the, or the cannabis in the community.
No, if you want, here's the issue, here's the plus or minus on the issue.
Right.
I, we can do that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I...
I'm learning something about subcommittees on this council, they would have a bias that would push you into something, or me, I don't want that either, okay.
We have some other things we're working on that we can just take turns.
My request would be that the recommendations be focused, you know, so that there, it doesn't have to be comprehensive and it can come back, and I assume we'll be doing this as an iterative process over time, as people learn more and more about, you know, just like we did on the appointments and the length of time ahead of time to be able to, you know, think, the operational thing, so...
Understand, yeah, absolutely right.
Okay, so, you know, we have a few, then we don't need to be here probably all night trying to do some kind of a, you know, grand bargain or something.
Well, I can promise you that it won't be a grand bargain, there's a couple really pressing issues we need to focus on that are pretty simple, and then we get into more complicated that are more of the grand bargains, we're gonna, we are going to bifurcate, if not further partition.
Okay, do we have any other items?
I just want to ask, when are we going to do some of these codes, because my, you know, I, the code enforcement officer came to my house, and I'm on hold, and, and, and there are about hun, there are hundreds of people who are also not in compliance...
For, with...
With the fences that are on the, you know, the...
So do you want to be specific about bringing fences, hedges, and back to council for a discussion?
That's already on the schedule, isn't it?
Yeah, is that coming?
It's going to be the, one of the first things Mr. Connolly and I are working on, yes.
Okay, okay, I was just asking, all right.
Careful, careful what you wish for.
Indeed.
As a person who's a pedestrian in this town, I, I see a lot, and, God help us.
If, just a, just a point of order, Mr. Summers, if a councilperson has a violation, notice of violation, are they going to have to recuse himself from the discussion?
I'm not aware of the exact facts of that case, not all code enforcement cases at my desk, but yes, if there's a, the notice of violation on a property, then the council would have to recuse, if it's a friendly warning letter, then that situation would be different.
Okay.
I'm just a humble vendor.
Mayor Johnston?
No, that should apply to all of our commissions and boards, yes.
When it's my turn, I actually have a handout on future agenda items.
He has one or two.
I may not call on him this time. Yes, if you've got it, you-
Okay.
Go back your little, your dump truck up and-
Really quick.
Oh, yeah, oh, good.
Okay, I believe we're gonna have the nuclear free zone ordinance, the second meeting in April?
April 10th, yes.
First meeting in April.
First meeting in April, okay.
April 10th.
All right.
And a nuclear winter, is that what the nuclear freeze is?
Let's cross out second meeting and put first, okay?
Okay, first meeting. Number three, councilman, person, excuse me, Francine and I are prepared to give a, a discussion, come back with a discussion on tiny homes at the second meeting in March.
Is that gonna have recommendations?
Yes, staff-
We also, not an ordinance introduction, but a, a report.
We have a draft ordinance as well.
Okay, well, we could, we gonna have that the second meeting in March?
Yes, yes, we are.
That's in two weeks.
Okay. I was, I want to also hand out, well, I already handed out the general plan update proposal. I'm suggesting the second meeting in April, we look at, look, going forward on a general plan update.
Why not do it at the next meeting and just say, bring the, what we said in the status report, give us a budget and, and-
Okay.
And some kind of a calendar.
That's fine with me.
And then we can decide if we want to proceed forward.
Okay. And I, and again, we can define it at that time. I, you know, that was one particular definition, but number five is dictated by the electoral calendar. This came up in the council protocol. Do we want to be looking at a council-sponsored introduction of a, putting the council stagger back on that would have to be put before the voters?
You beat me to the punch. I was going to recommend that we bring that forward.
Okay.
We should put it on the, yeah.
And I have a, I have a associated item that goes along with that as well, which council might also want to consider if you wanted to make any adjustments to council pay.
That's number six. Do it same time.
There you go. Oh, there it is.
Yeah. Now, the, the next one is, Chautauqua is gonna have a panel on water, part two, and they have asked councilperson Francine and I if it's possible, given the priority of water, whether the city would like to be, consider being a sponsor of the Chautauqua. Whether we, that would have to be on the agenda if we were in to discuss it.
Yeah, we, we need more details.
It would have to be on the agenda. This is for agenda. This is not saying yes.
Yeah.
Something like that would have to be on the agenda. I'm asking whether we, we have support for putting it on the-
Apparently they hit you up then, after they hit me up.
And, and that would have to be at the next meeting, given the date that they're proposing this, if we want to have it on the agenda. So that's all. It would have to be on the next meeting if we want to have it on the agenda.
Well, would they, would that be with the understanding that they provide information, or?
Of cour, yeah, this is just an agenda request, that's it.
If there's nothing, then we'll just do nothing.
I think we need to, well, I guess the, the discussion when, when it gets, I guess, on the agenda, but we should keep in mind what the city council's responsibilities are and not be everybody wanting us to write checks to them to do the job we're supposed to be doing, because I, you know, yeah, I understand.
I don't want to deliberate on it now, because-
Right, okay.
You know, I just thought, you know, it's an important enough issue that-
Important enough for us to do it.
You know, and then the, the next thing was, I did personally suggest, I looked it up on the budget, and they're talking about kind of having a big rededication of the Playhouse this year, and I'm thinking, for a couple of reasons, it might be really good to use some of the budget we have, which is $15,000 unexpended, in the Historic Preservation Commission budget for historic resources surveys, that we use some of that for, put it on the agenda for us to direct that we do one for the Playhouse. That's-
Okay.
That's just, I'm suggesting for your second meeting in April, it'd just be on the agenda for that discussion.
Okay, you got that, Steve?
Yes, thank you.
And, and the last is to put on the agenda, looking at possible, you know, consulting contracts for grant applications and the city's vital interest having to do with water project developments. Again, why am I deliberating? We're just asking that it be on the agenda.
I would support that. I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's two people think that's a good idea. Paul?
I just had one agenda. I'm, I'm fine with any of these. I've had a couple of comments from, from veterinarians, and my question on the, for a future agenda item is to bring the, the neuter and spay ordinance, or whatever we called it, to talk about the enabling regulations that are being put into place in the fines. For instance, we, we put the reg, we, we put the ordinance in place, but to the best of my knowledge, we didn't talk about what, if a veterinarian does not do that type of, if, if he just doesn't do it, not because he can't do it, he just doesn't do it, is there a penalty for that?
For the vet?
Yes.
I don't think so, no.
No, of course not.
Well, then what are, then the vet is gonna be allowed to break the law?
No, no, they can go to a different vet.
No, no, I'm saying that they take it to the vet, and the vet says, "I'm not gonna do it that way," or the vet just doesn't do it that way.
There's nothing in the ordinance that orders the vet to do anything.
They have to travel somewhere.
Okay, so, so it's not, make sure I'm clear. If a vet, if an animal was brought to a vet, and the vet does not do the spay or neutering the way it's supposed to be, there's no penalty to that.
I don't think so.
There's no penalty to that veterinary.
Unless they own the animal.
Is that correct?
Right.
There is no penalty for the vet.
And, and if that happens, what's the penalty to the owner?
It'd be a violation of municipal code.
Right, the owner's subject to a violation of municipal code. The first fine would be a hundred bucks.
The owner has to fine a service provider.
What sort of civil right is the owner washed because the, because a veterinarian which is-
I, I-
They have to go to another county.
Yeah.
Another city.
Are you, you're talking about, what you're talking about is that rather than the own, if the owner doesn't want the animal spayed or neutered, but would like a vasectomy or a tubal, what was it?
Ligation.
Legation. That's what you're talking about.
Right. I have, I have, have had conversations with veterinarian, veterinarians that say, not only have they never done a-
That's correct.
Vasectomy, that they would never perform a vasectomy because they believe that it's not healthy for the dog, and there's gonna be more testicular cancer, and there's gonna, and all that, so if that person, if a person takes their dog to that veterinarian, and that veterinarian does not perform the procedure the way that our code says it, there's no penalty.
No, our code doesn't say that.
No liability for that.
Our code doesn't say that. Our code has, says that you can choose whether to spay, neuter, or have any other form of sterilization.
Okay, no, what I thought it was, is we were gonna come back with a definition of what sterilization meant.
We did, we did.
We did in, in the adoption.
Okay.
Right.
On the second reading, we did that.
Yes, the adoption ordinance, so find sterilization probably.
So you don't have to go somewhere else, correct?
It, it, it's up to the pet owner-
Okay.
-to find someone that does the procedure if they want to have the option.
Okay, all right, so-
It's purely on the pet owner's ability to find a-
So we took away the requirement that it had to be a vasectomy or a tubal ligation, or whatever, okay.
We simply said sterilization.
Okay, gotcha.
The wrong category.
Then I have a better understanding.
That got added into, actually, as a way to comply.
Veterinarians have the right to discriminate, apparently.
Well, if they don't know how to do the procedure, they have to be trained in it. It's not a difficult procedure.
Just don't ask them to bake you a cake, all right?
All right.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up. Do we need that on the agenda? We're, we're still on future agenda.
No, 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 it's done.
Okay, we're getting punchy, and that's getting punchy. We've been punchy for a while, yeah.
Play with on the time change.
Any other agenda items, Randy?
I, I just would like to, Bill and I are supposed to meet next week with staff regarding cultural resources.
Yes, this Wednesday, yes.
And then I'd like to-
Oh, is that tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Good, I'm glad I reminded myself. And then what I'd like to do is get that back on the agenda.
Is that the afternoon?
As quick as possible.
Yes, yes, we agree.
All right, and then I am in complete agreement with Bill regarding any possible water contracts or water project development in the community.
Talk about it.
Right, and there's gonna be other stuff coming down the pipeline regarding water that I think we all have to look at and address, but I'll save that for a later date. Okay.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
A perfect segue. I believe you all received, or should have received, I forwarded the notice of preparation for the draft environmental impact report that was put out by the city of San Buenaventure for the state water interconnection project. There is a scoping meeting scheduled this week, and there's also an opportunity to submit any comments on this. Comments need to be submitted by March 30th, so I wanted to ask if there was any interest on the council to put this on the agenda for March 27th, to give direction to staff to submit comments.
I definitely want to see that on the agenda.
I, I would agree, and I actually called the director at, Susan, at Caiegas about this. And she indicated that us having a specific statement of, to the economic benefits of the interconnection to our valley would be relevant to the EIR.
Okay.
Okay, so we're in agreement, that'll be on the agenda for discussion.
For the 27th, right, we'll need to, we'll need to bring that back on the 27th, since the deadline is at the end of the month.
One question.
And we can write the letters as individuals, right?
Well, this would be a city-
Um, you-
Yeah, we can, there, it might be a city letter, but we can also weigh in as citizens.
Yeah. Unless, of course, you're contradicting the majority vote according to the protocol.
As long as it's not biased, no.
Huh?
Well, an official position would be perhaps useful.
Would be better.
And any individual council member may send a letter identifying, of course, if they're speaking with city authorization or as an individual.
Yeah.
So I have just one question regarding the drinking fountains at Libby Bowl and at the skate park.
Yes.
So I've had a couple citizens call me regarding the foul taste.
Okay.
I've directed them to Casitas Municipal Water District. Do we need to direct them to Gray Grant?
Well, I'm not sure what might be causing the, the foul taste, but we'd be happy to have Public Works look into it and see if the filters are up to speed and, and things like that, so.
Okay, I was just wondering who to, who to direct them to, that's all.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much of that is just due to the, the natural water supply, or if it's something in our system or in, or in the actual dispensing unit, so.
If they're really old.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should look at them.
Real quick, just one thing, I just wanted to announce to council that this was our actual, our first meeting that we're able to livestream out, so you, so for those previously, if you were not a cable customer, you were not able to watch this. Now you're able, you can either tune in and watch it on the city's website with a very slight delay, or you can go onto the city's YouTube channel and you can watch the meetings that way now, so.
We commemorated the first of those.
Has that been posted on our website to tell people that it's available, assuming that they're-
We are, we actually, we actually-
Need to do on Saturday nights?
We actually were not thinking that we were gonna be able to get this one up. We were actually planning to do the big announcement for the next meeting, and we were able to move it forward pretty quickly, so we figured why not get it up and get it running. So, yeah, we, we do have a, I think we have a press release going out on that, so.
So is it gonna be titled Tuesday Night Life?
There you go, right.
And I'm, I'm so glad we had spay-neuter on our first ever.
Oh, I'm glad we had.
Mr. City Manager, what else do you have?
Um-
Properly gavel on you.
Oh, so I think we, I, I'll follow up, but it sounds like we found a date for the, the workshop to, to finish up our discussion on the prioritization of tasks. Looks like 28th or the 29th were, were available dates for folks, so we'll follow back through on an email with that and get that set, so.
And everyone's available on those, too, so we're, because we've noticed.
Yeah, I think, I think they're both on the 28th or 29th, but we'll, we'll follow back through very email and get that set.
Appreciate y'all's consideration.
But, yeah, I think we found a date that all five could be, could be present. That's all for me.
Anything, Matt?
Just a brief thing, they had, answer a question that came up, I think, meeting or two ago, in public comment on school facilities fees. We've confirmed that the city confirms payment of, but does not collect, the fee adopted by the school district under certain authority in the education code. The city does not directly impose the fee these are on building permits and certain planning permits cited in the city's code that's imposed under different authority in the education code, because that separate fee requires council action. Council hasn't taken that action. Unfortunately, the school district is imposing their impact fee under separate authority given to them alone in the education code. We've provided previous written analysis of this in detail, and the matter can be agendized for future discussion by the council in open or closed session, considering litigation implications as desired.
Bill?
Aren't they required to fi, have findings to impose that fee, that they needed to build more facilities?
They adopted those findings in 2012. The question remain, the question for the council would be, do you wish to assess whether those findings remain valid?
That's all I'm saying.
That's the question for the council.
The issue of the findings, being accurate or not.
And that would be a future agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick thing. As far as the dates, the 28th or 29th, I'm no longer available on the 29th, only the 28th.
Okay.
No longer on the 28th?
No, on the 29th, I'm not available now.
Okay.
I got called into trial.
I have one last thing.
Okay, so we, so that leaves us for Wednesday for sure?
The 28th will be quick.
Okay, so we already know, okay.
And that's gonna be at what time?
I believe we're gonna try to do that in the morning. I'll, I'll confirm with Mr. Vega. We'll send an email out.
Well, if it's in, if it's as early as 10 o'clock, then I might not be available that day. I'm in court first thing in the morning.
On Wednesday, too?
On Wednesday, yeah.
All right, we'll follow back through.
What time are you back?
I'd be back by 11:00.
Oh, he's back, did you hear that? He's back by 11:00.
Okay.
So we don't have to do it too late.
We'll follow up, okay.
Okay, Randy?
I, I just had a, a, a simple comment for our police chief, James Freyhoff. I met his mentor, who's the police chief at the city of Thousand Oaks, and James, he just thinks the world of you, and, and I was talking to him briefly about this contract issue that we're having, and his recommendation was that maybe him and you and Bill and I get together and, and just have a, a frank conversation regarding it, and, and he wanted to see the information that Bill had, and so I just wanted to bring that up, that we'll be contacting you to maybe let you set something up. And then his last comment was if he had 10 of you, that he'd have all of his problems solved in the city of Thousand Oaks. And he did speak to an incredible program about Athu, risks, children that are at risk, and he's got an incredible program that he's running that, I mean, he's spoken it for 20 minutes. You could see the passion in his heart and, and how he felt about that program. Just incredible.
Yeah, Tim is an amazing person. I had an opportunity, obviously, to work with him for a couple of years out in Thousand Oaks, and we were able to get a lot done together, and he's high speed like I am, so he's a lot of fun to work with, for sure.
Great guy.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.